City Council meeting is in order at 6:00. And I'm going to ask Sylvia McGinnis if you would come to the podium and please lead us in prayer.
Thank you, let us pray. Lord, we present ourselves to you humbly seeking your guidance and help this evening. We are grateful for each council member who's been chosen by the people of Kerrville to represent many interests of Kerrville residents and to consider wisely the complex problems in the Kerrville area. Tonight's council meeting is tremendously important, Lord, for these council members must look into the future as they do financial planning for the area and lay out a comprehensive plan that will affect the city of Kerrville for decades to come. We thank you for your great love for the people of Kerrville and your desire that we succeed and prosper in all that we do. So as these council members ponder many good opinions and ideas, we ask that you, Lord, will bring their minds and decisions into unity in the best opinions, ideas and decisions, your opinion, Lord. One mind, one heart, your mind and heart for the people of Kerrville. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Tonight, for the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to, I'm going to call on, I think it's good, a kind of a newbie, newcomer to lead us tonight. And so Brenda Craig, City Secretary. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You didn't say it, but thank you anyway.
Yeah.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. We've got some very special guests that we're going to recognize later on. We've got the Peckup Lifeguard team over here and some golfers back here. So if we have to be rescued or we need to know when to hit our nine iron, I think we've got it covered tonight. Okay, the first announcement tonight, the Kerrville Library earns full accreditation again. I don't know if you probably saw it in the paper this week, but the Bud Holsworth Memorial Library has been accredited again by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. It's a fully qualified member of the Texas library system for the state fiscal year coming up. That's September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019. This accreditation allows the library to participate in the statewide interlibrary loan program and tax share programs and keeps it eligible to apply for the Texas State Library competitive grants and a federal E-rate program. I know we're mentioning the library a lot, but I can't say enough about the staff over there, Laura Beckton and all her people, they do a fantastic job. And so that's why they keep appearing each week on our screen. We have two really fun events coming up this weekend. The first one is the Kids' Triathlon. This is the 23rd annual Kids' Triathlon. That's going to be Saturday, this Saturday, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at Singing Wind Park. And it's open to children ages pre-K to 18. And this is a very fun event. The preregistration event ends Thursday, but we will continue onsite registration Saturday morning, although it's early, 7:30 a.m. This event begins at 9:00. So you want to get out there early. There is a $15 entrance fee, but that includes a tee-shirt, a water bottle, and the opportunity to win a great number of door prizes. So y'all, check this out. I think it's going to be fun. A little early, but we'll, we'll get up there and get out there and have fun. And then in the afternoon, one of my favorite events every year, I think, I don't know how you can get around not having fun at this, Wet 'n' Wag. This is where the dogs can go swimming in the Olympic pool, which is being closed just for them. It's going to be 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Olympic Pool at Singing Wind Park. There's a limit of one dog per adult chaperone. Registration begins at 5:00 p.m. and that's followed by a doggy swimsuit contest, a pet and owner look-alike contest, games and Olympic pool access and off-leash play throughout the event. Now, you have to bring a proof of rabies vaccination, although tags will suffice for that. Owners are asked not to bring aggressive dogs. That means I have to leave one of mine home because he does not play well with others. Pet waste bags will be available and it's asked that you please clean up after your pet if they get excited and have an accident. So y'all, check it out. These are going to be two fun events over the weekend. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Let me make one comment. I guess I don't have to move close, right? Where'd he go? One comment about the Wet 'n' Wag. I don't know if we've talked about it, but when we're doing the feasibility study for the new pool or whatever, we need to make sure that this stays a feature of whatever it is we do, right? So I'm just throwing it out there. All right, anyways.
Yeah, all right, all right, thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, I also have a, I actually have an announcement. It's more of a question for help than an announcement, but I've been hearing stuff about something and I'm asking for the citizens to sort of keep their ears open to whatever it is because I'm not really sure my own self. It's something called the Pocket Monkey Project. I'm not sure if it's a economic thing or what it is, but I've heard that there's something, some move afoot behind this project. So if you hear about it, if you could bring it back to the visitors forum, let us know about it, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Let me go over a few procedural rules before we move forward. If we can have that slide that was up a moment ago on citizen participation. I will not go over all of this, but it's a reminder just about the procedure that we follow and we follow this for very good reasons, so that everybody has an opportunity to speak, but also so that the meeting moves along. So anyway, if you will take a look at that in terms of relevance of the meeting, of the comments, time, and directing everything to the city council as you speak. Just a couple of other things, and this relates to the council. The, on our agenda, and if there is like one or two questions for one, for an item that's on a consent agenda, if we will all remember to check with the city manager or one of the departments or whatever to get that question answered, so that we don't have to pull that particular item, although obviously there's the right to do so. The other thing, reminder to council, be sure and press the button on the iPad before you speak. Okay, in the visitor's citizens forum, we have one person scheduled to speak, Dan Sebastian.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, and woman. I'm Dan Sebastian. I'm Vice President in Charge of Operations at Christian Assistance Ministry. Christian Assistance Ministry, the program came into being in 1987. There were about six churches or so who were interested in doing something for low-income families in a way of providing food and support. And as churches were being approached individually by various needy folk in the community, the churches decided it'd be well to partner together in a kind of ministry in which they together could bring their resources and then have a central location to which families could come for food and various other items. And hence the Kerr County Area Christian Assistance Ministry was born, located now at the corner of Clay and Barnett Streets. CAM is, has a membership of 40 member churches in Kerr County. We have 150 or thereabouts volunteers who work at CAM. No one is paid there for what they do. We're open from 2:00 to 6:00 on Mondays, 2:00 to 4:00 Tuesday through Friday. And we provide basically food and provide clothing, but also assist with utilities and prescriptions, this for low-income families. Now principally, we're concerned with food and we partner with the San Antonio Food Bank. We order on average approximately, say, 13,000 pounds of food from the food bank once a month, and we ordinarily pay 15 cents a pound for the food which we receive from the food bank. Now, in addition to that food that we receive from the food bank, there are of course many food drives, churches, individuals, Feeding America, involving Walmart and HEB, Hunters for the Hungry, and these kinds of other sources of food for CAM. It amounts to about 20,000 pounds of food monthly. In addition to that, other than daily distribution, we have a monthly food fair at which time the food bank sends some 22 pallets of food to CAM. We lay that out in the parking lot. This will amount to an average of 25,000 pounds of food and will average about 230 families representing 750 individuals who will receive that food once a month. So to give you an idea of how many people are touched by CAM's ministry during the course of the year, we will have some 8,500 client visits at CAM and this will represent some 30,000 individual persons who will receive food during the course of the year. The food bank provided us an interesting statistic a couple of years ago, looking at the years 2011 through 2016. The food bank informed us, sent us this information, saying that they had recorded within their system the foods, the amount of food that had been processed at CAM. And they said 1,799,700 pounds of food in that five-year period had come through the food bank to CAM here in Kerrville. That in addition, of course, to various other kinds of foods that come to CAM. So that's something, to give you an idea, a picture of what CAM is about, what we do here in Kerr County, and we're deeply indebted to the support of the community for what we're able to do in this program.
All right, thank you, Reverend Sebastian. Very interesting, very good. Thank you. This time, we have some presentations.
Ms. Brenda Craig, if you can come on up. While she's coming up, I want to recognize her family, which is.
He's right there next to his sister.
Raise your hand. And his sister, okay, great. And then your son and his wife, y'all raise your hand. Thank y'all for being here with us on a special occasion for Brenda. So the mayor has something he wants to read and then I have something, so why don't you get on over here?
I am doing what you tell me.
Well, that's new. Okay, this is a resolution, a commendation, where is Brenda Glenn Craig was born and raised in Kerrville, Texas, and is a fifth-generation Kerrvillian. And where is Brenda began her employment with the city of Kerrville, working at the Bud Holsworth Memorial Library during the summers of 1967 and 68. Brenda launched her city career on April 29, 1981, when she was hired as the Fire Department's Secretary. In September of 1982, Brenda transferred to the Planning and Engineering Department as the Department's Secretary. And in September of 1983, she transferred to Administration as the City Manager's Secretary. On October 1, 2000, Brenda's title changed to Secretary to the City Manager and Deputy City Clerk. And where is Brenda was promoted to City Secretary in March of 2003. And where is Brenda is a Texas Registered Municipal Clerk and a member of the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. Brenda has served as President and Treasurer of the Hill Country Chapter of City Clerks and Secretaries Association. And where is, in 2009, Brenda was nominated by City Attorney Mike Hayes at the Municipal Clerks Honor Road. And where is Brenda has been an active member of the Kerr County Women's Chamber since 1983. And Brenda was elected American Businesswoman's Association's Woman of the Year in 1998. And where is Brenda served as Chairman of the Kerr County Historical Commission from 1990 to 1992. And where is Brenda has provided excellent leadership, advice and professionalism for the City Secretary's Office and the city of Kerrville. And where is Brenda has provided information and assistance to 63 mayors and council members and has worked for 10 city managers. And where it is with sincere appreciation that the city of Kerrville recognizes Brenda G. Craig for over 37 years of dedication and service to our community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim August the 17th, 2018, as Brenda Glenn Craig Day in the city of Kerrville and ask all the citizens to honor and congratulate Brenda on her retirement. And it is signed by the city council.
So next, we'd like to come up, one of Brenda's colleagues, the president of the chapter for this area, please come on up, the City Secretary for Lano.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Toni Milam. I serve the citizens of Lano. I serve as their city secretary. We are a close-knit group, all of us that are city secretaries that aspire to be city secretaries. So on behalf of the Hill Country Chapter, we would like to congratulate Brenda. We're going to be getting together in her honor on Thursday. So we do best at eating, so that's what we're going to do. We're going to eat. But more importantly, Brenda has been a member of the Texas Municipal Clerks Association for I don't know how many years, Brenda, probably ever since you even started. But she has accomplished not only locally, but statewide, and that is a huge organization that is recognized by the state and therefore those of us that are city secretaries that go through a certification process to garner being a registered with the state municipal clerks. So on behalf of the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, they present those that are retiring with a gorgeous blanket engraved. So Brenda, if you would, share this, curl up on the couch come this wintertime. But let me just emphasize the involvement, not only that Brenda has been involved with locally, but statewide. She served on several committees. She was the Hill Country Chapter's Clerk of the Year in 2014 and was a nominee for that state-recognized Clerk of the Year. She also served on the Retirement Committee, how appropriate, the Audit Committee and the Scholarship Committee, and was also the historian of the association. So a lot of that went side by side and coincided with what you've done here for Kerrville. So on behalf of the Hill Country Chapter and the Municipal Clerks Association, I congratulate you. You've been a mentor of mine since I've been in Lano. So, but guess what? I'm not far behind you. So anyway, my congratulations, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me. I enjoyed the drive over. I'm going to go and spend some of your sales tax money here while I'm here. So anyway, congratulations.
Thank you. Who is the sheriff of Lano County?
Bill Blackburn is the sheriff of Lano County. I would also mention, we are in the process of looking for a chief of police. You got anybody in mind?
No. No.
But I'd ask.
And lastly, we have here just a certificate of recognition. We'll have some more party words and gifts on Friday for you and the staff, but it just says, "For 37 years of dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Kerrville, congratulations on her service since 1981." I was a sophomore in college. Charlie wasn't even born yet, so long-time service and it's been remarkable. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we also have Kelly Early, I believe, unless she did hers earlier. She did it earlier, okay.
The lifeguard team, if you will come up here.
Both teams?
Yeah.
And Ashley, if you can come forward too. So I want to go ahead and say a few words about Ashley before the mayor starts talking about these stars that we have here that represent us so well in the lifeguard competition. Ashley is really kind of the master behind the scenes making things work, and she's been involved in this competition and this training for many years. And so she would never admit it, so I'm up here to tell you that she is a force to be reckoned with in terms of developing and training these teams to do so well in state competition. So Ashley, thank you for what you've done to bring these kids to such incredible competitive shape.
Proclamation is, whereas the city of Kerrville has participated in competitive lifeguard competitions for five years, and whereas in 2018, this year is the first year that the city of Kerrville sent two guard teams to participate in competitions. The veteran team, Angels, comprised of team members Courtney, how do you say their last name?
Laquay.
Laquay, all right. Courtney Laquay, Carlos Nava, all right. Jacob Pierce, all right. And Michael Tron. Okay. And the first-year competitor team, Owls, comprised of team members Gabrielle Buckholz-Cassell?
Cassell.
Yeah. Garrison Ingstrom, Megan Maxson, and Corey Smith. And where is, both teams competed and placed either number one or number two in three separate competitions. And both teams were invited to compete at the Texas State Lifeguard Championships, an invitation-only competition. And where is the Angels, the Angels team were named the champions of the Texas State Lifeguard Competition, winning first place, while the Owls were named the runner-up champions, taking second. And where is, two Kerrville lifeguards were honored at the Central Texas Lifeguard Competition by being named the top male competitor and the top female competitor who showed exceptional skills. This honor went to Gabriel Buckholz-Cassell of the Owls and Courtney Laquay of the Angels. Whereas in addition, the city of Kerrville lifeguards were awarded this spirit stick during the Central Texas Lifeguard Competition. And where is, guard team is an extremely valuable tool for ensuring the safety of guests at the pool, as the aquatics division's mission is to prevent the loss of life due to drowning. And where is, guard team elevates the knowledge base of the lifeguard staff through rigorous training in addition to regular in-service trainings. The teams underwent very intense training to prepare for the competitions, and their efforts paid off as they brought home the gold and silver in the topmost competition. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, the mayor of the city of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim August the 15th as Guard Team Day. So the awards that are presented, I assume you could take to any merchants or restaurants in town tomorrow for a discount? Okay. Before I present those, when you read what they did at this state competition, the different, you know, they had different situations set up that they then had to respond to and show that they could handle. But I mean, one of them was, somebody's coming down the slide and they amputate their tongue. We won't go into what you did in that situation, but anyway. Carlos? Michael? Gabrielle Buckholz-Cassell? Megan Maxson? Corey Smith? Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, you, did you get a picture? Okay, everybody look this way. Okay. Okay, if you'll come up here.
Scott, if you could come up as well, the coach. So you might be asking, why do we have Ingram residents at the Kerrville City Council meeting? Well, it's because these are really our citizens as well, and they play at the Shriner Golf Course. And Scott here does a lot of coaching along with their coach. So we are honored that you guys are with us tonight. And so, Mr. Mayor, if you want to read that for us.
All right, here, I will. Certificate of recognition is hereby presented to the Ingram Lady Warriors, 2018 Class 3A Varsity Girls Golf Team. This certificate of recognition is being presented to the Ingram Lady Warriors, 2018 Varsity Golf Team. Under the direction of head coach Lauren Greenshield, the Lady Warriors won the 2018 UIL Class 3A Girls Golf State Championship. Members of the Varsity Championship Golf Team are Kyla Chapa, Jordan Kraft, Katie Olive, Ryan Spencer, and Marissa Vaila. The city of Kerrville congratulate the 2018 Ingram Lady Warriors for an outstanding season. Signed, Bill Blackburn, Mayor. Do you have a captain?
I have a.
Congratulations.
I have something for you and your coaches. So you can never go, you can always use an extra sleeve of balls, okay? Brand-new balls, don't lose them. Congratulations. And your coaches.
Thank y'all, I appreciate y'all having us. All right, sure.
Take them all.
Coach, there's a couple more here.
There's a couple more. You'll find someone that'll.
Did you move up just a little?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Before you close the meeting. Before you close the meeting, put this part or open the other. Wait just a second.
Do what?
Just wait, wait just a second.
Okay, okay.
Don't let them get out of the room.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
Has requested to speak, Mr. Mayor.
You have?
I have, yes.
Okay, all right.
As a, I'd like to have just a personal, uh, moment, and, uh, as I understand, we have a birthday in the room. And, uh, it's our mayor who has a birthday today. So, would all of you join me in singing "Happy Birthday To You"? So, stand up and let's sing.
Happy Birthday To You. Happy Birthday To You. Happy Birthday To Your Mayor. Happy Birthday To You.
We need it, George.
All right, all right, thank you, thank you.
You won't forget this birthday.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, I've been asked how I was gonna celebrate my birthday, and I said, "By presiding at church, at, at city council," so. Yeah, I almost said...
Unfortunately, we've got these new microphones.
I should make birthday cake cupcakes, but we have Sandy that will pass it around.
Oh, good, good, all right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, unfortunately, we've got these new microphones, so it picked up all of our singing.
Yeah, that's, that's true too, that's true too. Before we go to consent agenda, I, I need to explain something. There are items that have been, uh, there are items that have been, uh, draw, withdrawn from your, uh, from your agenda. And, uh, I will mention those, they're under public hearings related to annexation, uh, property five A, five B, five C, five D, uh, and the, uh, the reason that, that has been pulled is this.
Six A and six B too.
Yeah, six A and six B as well, thank you. Uh, the reason those were pulled is this. Uh, when the notice went out, it said Thursday, August fourteenth, and that was to the people that might appear and, and, you know, have input to what was decided and so forth. And the, the concern, the concern was this, that if someone didn't note the discrepancy and they really wanted to speak, but they showed up at Thursday instead of Tuesday and it already been decided, then that would not be fair or right. So, uh, so that's the reason that those items are pulled, uh, to really make sure that if folks want to weigh in on a decision, that in fact, uh, they've got the right information and, and are here. Okay. Now, we move to the consent agenda. And you will see those listed in your agenda.
And, are we...
I pressed a motion.
Oh, you did, okay, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the items in the consent agenda as they are.
Okay.
And I will second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor of accepting the items and consent agenda as listed? If you will, let that be known. Okay, and it is five oh. Okay. Uh, we will move then to item seven A. Okay.
I'll go ahead and read the captions. An ordinance leading chapter ninety-eight telecommunications of the code of ordinances the city of Kerrville, Texas, containing a cumulative clause containing savings and severability clause and providing other matters relating to the subject. Um, this is the second reading, no changes have been made in the ordinance since the first reading. This is merely a cleanup item. Chapter ninety-eight deals with franchises for cable companies, and we no longer have that authority, nor have we had that authority, uh, since two thousand and five. So, this is just a cleanup, get this off the records. Um, if I were gonna name, you know, sometimes you name legislation for people, I would name this the Brenda Craig, uh, ordinance number, um, twenty eighteen, uh, dash fourteen, though. But no changes since the first reading.
Okay, all right. What is your pleasure in regard to seven A?
I made a motion, uh, Mayor.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And my motion is to accept.
Yeah, to accept. Uh, we've got a motion and a second to accept. Uh, let's vote on that. Okay, and it passes five oh. Then, the, uh, next item is the interlocal agreement for the provision of animal services and library services attachments, and, uh, I think the city manager is going to speak to that.
It's Councilman Veruri's idea.
Okay, all right.
So, basically, I, I asked to put this on here more as a discussion than anything else, um, mostly 'cause a lot of things are going on with it, and, uh, it's a little backdrop on it. Basically, we have an, an interlocal agreement in place already right now for, uh, kind of barter, animal control services for library services, county and city. Um, it's been in place, uh, since I guess, I guess it's been effective since January of this year. The county has made two separate proposals to amend the interlocal agreement, um, in recent days or weeks. Uh, the first one in, uh, July, uh, sixteenth of this ye, uh, this year, and then again on August first of this year. And, uh, in that interim period or whatnot, the city manager granted the, the county the authority to modify that agreed upon, the agreed upon hours of the animal control part. This whole discussion is, the amendment that they proposed has nothing to do with the library. They're only, we're only focusing on the animal control. Um, so, they were given the authority to, uh, modify the hours that were in that agreement, um, without the need for an amendment. So then, um, so, the other thing is, part of the discussion today is to kind of open the, the door to a future discussion, not for one today, but also to consider down the road, seeing as how there isn't really, it's somewhat of a manufactured connection between books and dogs, um, to where we might, since both services are up and running, we might look at considering ways of having them be separated instead of tied together in this interlocal, 'cause it kind of bogs us down when we want to modify one or the other. Um, but then, the, the only premium services that are really to speak of in the current agreement, that the city is asking for out of animal control services of the county, is, um, is the requirement of hours being open at the public facility of the, um, animal control, the county's animal control facility, I guess they call it, uh, KSAS or Kerr, Kerr County Animal Services. And, uh, and then the aid of animal control officers in handling city municipal court cases involving animals without the need for a subpoena, which I guess they could've needed if we weren't offering that in the agreement. So, um, so if, if the hours of the animal control, this is something I asked last meeting, but if the hours of the animal control facility are modifiable without amending the agreement, that kind of leaves practically no premium services being provided with the city, and therefore, you know, kind of what is the benefit of this interlocal agreement to start with? You know, we'd just like to see animal control services, uh, run the way the county wants to run them, is kind of what we're gonna end up with. The, uh, the other part of the discussion is, um, city council is the body that sets policy in the city. And so, this interlocal agreement that's already in place is arguably current policy, and therefore modifications should not be entertained by anybody, council or otherwise, without prior, prior approval of council. You know, while I appreciate the city manager has been negotiating amended agreement, uh, my concern is that this agreement, this current agreement, is in force, and any change to it would be a change in policy, um, and possibly council consensus would have been to not really wish to amend it. Um, I, you know, there's no way to know that. So, um, city Kerrville has a, the other part of this is to sort of try and give a little bit extra direction to what maybe we'd like to see, not deal points necessarily, but it's, it's, the issue's been raised that in the interlocal agreement originally and in what's being talked about in the modification, uh, the county is referring to running animal control services based on a court order that they have, uh, that they passed in, I guess, two thousand and three, and it references sort of codes in the county. And, um, so, the concern is that, um, the city of Kerrville has a number of city codes pertaining to animal services still on the books. I'm not really sure if they, if they should've been a cleanup or not, but they're currently out there, um, uh, outlined in chapter eighteen of our city charter. And, uh, so the concern is that the, some of those codes in the city are overlapping, if you will, with some of the ones in the county. And, um, so, in negotiating this, if that's what we choose, if we're choosing to actually change policy and negotiate it, I would like to see direction given to, um, kind of synchronize those two, make the decision that we actually either want to continue with the ones in the city, or we knowingly, instead of unwittingly, um, dispose of them, um, and actually inform the, the county, because it's my understanding that if we have codes on the books, um, the municipality codes actually are supposed to override the county's, um, so long as rabies control aspect of it is covered. The example of what I'm talking about is, apparently on the city books, we have, um, a code saying that dogs and all other animals are needing to be restrained. With, you know, you can have them, they have to be restrained if they're outside of your property. Cats, however, are allowed to roam free. The county's court order that they're running this animal control services by, um, stipulates that dogs and cats need to be restrained. So, unless we highlight it to the county, the risk is that they would actually pick up cats in the city limits that should not be picked up. And the other is, uh, the other example that's, that's out there is, um, we have a, the court order says, that the county's running by, says that they got seventy-two hours of minimum hold time when they pick up an animal. The Facebook page of the county says that they'll only hold for forty-eight hours, so that's a discrepancy in their own stuff, but it also conflicts with one, again, in the city code that says minimum hold time would be seventy-two hours. So, really what I'm saying, all this to say is, I, I would, I would like to, even though we've already begun negotiating something, I, I would argue we, we should've, council should've been giving direction to actually, giving the authority to actually do that. So, I would say, I would propose making a motion that we formally authorize the city manager to begin negotiations to amend the interlocal agreement with the goal, with the added goal of ensuring the relevance and validity of current city animal service issues, um, as outlined, like I said, in the city charter. So, that, that's, I'm saying that as a motion. So.
Did you request to speak?
Okay, yeah.
That's okay, I mean...
Council, Councilman Vogel?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, um, I'd met with a group, and another concern that they had was having an adoption coordinator, and it seems like maybe we're not doing enough to try to get these animals adopted. Maybe we can work something out, or at least bring that to the negotiation. And also, if we could somehow use city resources, such as the website and social media, to work with the county to advertise what animals have been picked up, so an owner has the ability to not, to be able to see, look on the computer rather than go down to the facility or call down there.
Okay, all right. And, yes?
Yes. I'm sorry, I, I, you've got information that, that we don't have in front of us, uh, Councilman Veruri. I think we are premature, uh, this needs to come through the city manager, and, uh, that they're handling that, and I think it's out of place for us to be giving direction to something that has not yet come before us, and, uh, that we need to know that the city staff will bring it to us when it's time to bring it to us. And I think we are premature and, uh, and out of place here with, uh, trying to do something at this point in time.
I can, I can kind of understand that, but whenever they bring it to us, are you gonna tell us it's too late? You come at the eleventh hour, sorry.
But it hasn't come to us.
I know, I know, but when it does come to us, are you gonna tell us, "Well, no, it's too late"?
Well, I don't know why that would be what we would say at that point, uh, but it hasn't come, so I'm not sure what we would say at that point. I, I'm not quite understanding what you're saying.
Okay, well, let me, let me clarify what the motion is, 'cause the motion is not to adopt an agreement. The motion is to do, 'cause it's common practice, this council and any other, we set policy. So, the motion is actually to grant the authority to the city manager to actually negotiate this contract, which would change policy. Without that granting of it, I would say that it's not only premature to negotiate, but he doesn't really have the authority to do so, because it's setting policy by doing it. We have set policy right now with an agreement in place. So, the motion is to actually grant him the authority to continue doing what he's doing with the added deal point, if you will, of ensuring the relevance of our current codes. And that's all it is. It's not to adopt a plan, it's not even to, uh, give really deal points to it. And so, that's, I would argue, isn't premature, it's actually the way it's always been done.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Segal?
Let me make sure I understand, the interlocal agreement was basically created to allow the county residents to use our library for free, is that correct?
No. The interlocal agreement...
I mean, county ma, uh, city manager, is that basically the...
No, we bartered two services.
It was part of the arrangement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a big part of it. Um, but having said that, what I'd like to do is ask the city manager, um, because it was my understanding that you would bring it to us, you would, you know, um, work out all the details, uh, dot all the i's and cross the t's, and then bring it to us, and until that time, we, it was really not really worth it to go through the paperwork of reading it until we had a substantial document to approve, is that correct?
So, you know, I negotiate contracts all the time, and they do have policy implications, but I don't set the policy. Ultimately, those are approved by you all when the agreement's presented, and you weigh in, and you, you modify, you change, you edit, what, what have you. So, um, that's all we're doing in this case. In fact, I had a meeting with Commissioner Les this morning, and we just about finished up our discussions. So, um, that's, that's the way we work on all contracts.
So, at that time, when we give that, we could certainly add the, whatever it is we need to do with the city ordinances, if they, if they don't, if they conflict, we could work on those at that time, is that right?
Well, or, or maybe it's being addressed now, in, in our discussions.
Okay, to, to your, to your original point about going through all this stuff and all the paperwork and all that, nobody is suggesting that. What I'm suggesting to you now is that, just like when we had a, um, we went to the trouble of providing a, the city was gonna apply to EIC for a funding agreement, not do a funding agreement, they were gonna apply, that was brought to us to actually decide whether we should even apply. Okay, this, in my mind, this is maybe one that everybody would agree how we would negotiate it, however, the real thing is, when contracts are brought forward that are gonna, when we have policy to set, we don't normally go make a negoti, negotiation on good faith, 'cause those meetings with the county are good-faith negotiations, they're, the county's expecting that they're negotiating something for real. So, the precedent is being set that that's gonna happen, without necessarily knowing if, maybe council at the time didn't even want to have that contract renegotiated, it is entirely possible that we would've turned down any amendment to it. But by negotiating good faith, we've kind of created a situation there, which I would argue is the premature one, we, by negotiating ahead of whether we really want to. We haven't decided yet whether we wanted to. We're talking about setting policy, that's all. We're not talking about negotiating the contract, we're talking about setting policy of whether we should or should not enter into this. And in all other cases of coun, of council-approved contracts, we come here first and ask for approval to go do that.
But always with the city manager's blessings and advice and input.
Generally speaking, the city manager alone goes and negotiates, but the, the decision to actually enter into the negotiation rests with the policy setters. And so, and I'm not, I'm not saying, suggesting that we change anything that has been prematurely negotiated at this point, I'm suggesting that let's go on the record and say that we do support the nego- I'm suggesting that let's go on the record and say that we do support the negotiation as it is, because that's really what we should have been doing prior to it, and with the added issue that's been brought up, and like you said, maybe it is part of it, but maybe it isn't. So we've highlighted that in the motion.
So it's a technicality you're really talking about, we needed to verbally say?
No, it's actually not a technicality to say that city council sets policy. That's really what the motion is. So I, I, I stand with the motion, you don't actually have to vote for it. I'm standing with the motion, that I make a motion that we formally authorize the city manager to begin, I guess you'd say, continue negotiations to amend the interlocal agreement with the goal of ensuring the relevance and validity of current city animal services issues as outlined in the city charter, chapter eighteen, make sure, ensure those are upheld. That's my motion.
Alright. Then.
I'll second.
Okay, you got a motion to second? Then let's proceed to vote on that. Okay, it fails three to two.
Okay. Mike, can I ask a question? If you read that motion, did we just suggest that he can't continue to negotiate that contract?
No.
Because I just made a motion to continue and we, and that failed, so does that not mean that we?
No, your motion failed.
I understand that, read the motion though. Okay, that's good, good info.
Okay.
That wasn't my goal, I was just asking.
The eight B is a joint resolution number one, twenty eighteen of the city council for the city of Kerrville, Texas and Kerrville Public Utility Board, wherein the city council authorizes the city manager to enter into a solar energy ground lease for the use of the city property that K-Pub acknowledges the lease and the city will assign its rights under and management of the lease to K-Pub, and that such property will be used to install, maintain, and operate a solar powered electrical energy generating facility.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've got just a few brief slides to run through this potential partnership opportunity that has been presented to us from K-Pub and Mr. Mike Whitler. We've been working on this for some time now. They had approached us, as you may have seen in the paper, they have partnered with several other entities around the community in bringing the potential for solar installations to the community that have a host of benefits, both for K-Pub, K-Pub's customers, as well as the entities that are hosting, the host sites, if you will. And so a number of months ago, Mr. Whitler had approached us about potential sites on various city locations. We went through those and, and picked a site at what we affectionately call the city farm, located off of Spur One Hundred between there and the wastewater treatment plant. You also have the transfer station that's located on that site, as well as the old landfill. So I will just kind of briefly go through here. The reason we're here tonight is because of the Kerrville twenty fifty guiding principle based on public facilities and services, and that's really the guiding principle of committing to maintain high-quality, cost-effective public services and facilities consistent with anticipated growth and ensuring cost-effective use and maintenance of those assets. And, and this partnership happens to be, that happens to be both for the city organization as well as our, our branch, K-Pub, as well as the general public. The basic structure of the program include, includes us leasing a portion of that city farm property, approximately eleven acres, to the contractor, the developer that K-Pub is working with. K-Pub is essentially a part of the city, a branch of the city, so they are the assignee as, for ongoing maintenance of the program and, and their direct interaction with the developer. And then they will contract, the city slash K-Pub is contracting with that private solar developer to install it, operate it, own the onsite system, and essentially generate the power. K-Pub then contracts with them to buy the power exclusively, and then we get discounted rates as well as the lease fee for letting them utilize the land for twenty years.
Yeah, when you say discounted rates, what rates would those be?
So it is a commercial, the commercial rate that we have, we don't have that on all of our meters. We have certain meters that hit those commercial rate applications, and so it's a, it's a discount off those. The, because of the nature of solar generation, it's creating power during some of the peak times that, that K-Pub has during, you know, when the air conditioners are all cranking right in the middle of summer or in the middle of the day, that's when you can generate solar to the best. And so what it helps them do is shave off those peak time demands, so they're not having to go out to the market and buy when power is the most expensive. So it helps them save money, and in turn, they pass on a discounted rate to, to the city, specifically the host site.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So this is a map location, as you can see on the bottom of the page, that's Spur One Hundred going up. It's kind of on the far eastern side, if you will, of, of the city farm property. On the north, you can see where the transfer station is located at. Oh, go back one. So this is actually, the, the area in red is the approximately ten point six acres, and you can see that kind of orange squiggly line goes back to Spur One Hundred, uses an existing access gate that we have at that location. Very little traffic anticipated, but you know, periodic maintenance will be able to utilize that access area. You may recall, we've been having discussions in regards to landfill permit expansion. Obviously, we wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to be in conflict with that all. As you know, that's a very long play, you know, we're really anticipating that as a negotiating piece, if we were ever even have to use this landfill site. This is at the back of those landfill cells, it's seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and twenty, that it would potentially affect. The timeframe for those, we've been working with our consultant as well as working with TCQ, who eventually approves that permit. And, you know, we wouldn't, even if we started tomorrow on this landfill, which we're not, and hopefully never have to, those back sales would not be utilized for over thirty-five years. This is a twenty-year lease. So it's an interim use, TCQ feels comfortable with it continuing to be an interim use. So again, benefits to K-Pub, you know, this helps them reduce their summer peak demand and consequently, you know, helps keep rates low for, you know, all, or stabilized for all K-Pub customers, and they pass some of those savings on to us. The hosting partner, which is the city, we get reduced rates as well as some, some lease fees. And those are outlined here for you. Estimated annual solar savings is approximately just under thirty-one thousand dollars, and then lease revenue of just under fifteen thousand dollars. So in total, on our, our usual electric bill, we're saving about four and a half percent when you combine those. So we felt like that was a good partnership opportunity to bring to you guys. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
How quickly would this go into effect, specifically?
So there's a, essentially, the contract calls for a development year, so over the course of, you know, the next twelve months approximately, they'll be, you know, assessing, they've already assessed the site, but they'll go out there and, and do a little bit of site work, do some land clearing, make sure that they've got appropriate access easement and the roads built to the necessity that they have, and then be actually going forward with the installation. I think they're hoping that it's complete by next summer, but that, you know, there's some flexibility in just depending on what construction contingencies they may come across.
I don't know that anyone would bring this up, but I will say that I serve on the K-Pub board, but I'm not recusing myself because I have not voted on this item. There were three previous votes, all in support, that Mayor White made, so just clarifying that.
Okay. Again, the action for you tonight, it's a two-part. Essentially, it's approving the joint resolution that the K-Pub board will also be approving, our understanding at their next board meeting, in addition to authorizing the city manager to execute and finalize the actual lease contract, so.
It is captured in the resolution.
It is captured in the resolution, that's correct.
Can I ask for clarification on what you just said? Are you, are you saying that you, in your current state on K-Pub, you wouldn't be able to vote for K-Pub things? Or what were you trying to say?
I was just trying to say, I don't have a conflict of interest.
Okay, well, what'd you bring?
He wouldn't normally, that's, that's a role set up by the city and K-Pub ordinance.
Right, so he, so this whole business of whether he voted on anything before or not is, is irrelevant, right? Same with the mayor, White, that was voting, it was irrelevant then too, right? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve a joint resolution number one dash twenty eighteen of the city council, and that we authorize the city manager to enter into a solar energy ground lease.
I'll second that.
All right, you got a motion to second? Let's vote. Okay, and it passes five oh. Thank you. At this time, let's look at eight C fiscal year twenty nineteen, budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
EA can take this.
EA?
I'll be up here for a little bit.
Okay.
They, okay, so appreciate the opportunity to bring this to you. This was approved by the EIC at the July fifteenth meeting. Just want to quickly kind of run through the basics of what was presented to you within your packet. Essentially, the EIC budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen allocates just under three point five million. The revenue projections are just a little over three hundred, or three point five million. Essentially, the unrestricted cash balance right now sits going into this year was one point one six million. So it's a healthy enterprise, certainly, and net revenues are projected to be, exceed net expenditures for fiscal year nineteen by about thirty-one thousand dollars. The FY nineteen EIC budget does continue to broadly budget for, for general categories, administrative category, the business development category, quality of life and public infrastructure. Certainly, there's a host of other applicable uses that kind of come up under those general umbrellas, but for budgeting purposes, that's how the EIC has asked us to, to continue to proceed within those overall categories. Within the administrative category, it allocates three hundred and seventy thousand and five hundred dollars. That does include contribution to the Kerrville Economic Development Corporation, and certainly that's an item for you later tonight, so I'm not going to go into great detail there. The administrative services fees for the city and the administrative services that the city provides to the EIC is allocated at a hundred and eighty thousand. That is an increase from what you've seen in previous years. There has been no increase since fiscal year twenty twelve, and so we have not been keeping up with, you know, escalating cost of labor as well as just an enhancement of services that's occurred since that time.
We're also adding, isn't that the thing that's paying for a part of a position?
Yes, sir, that's correct, so that.
How much of that is that?
Forty percent of, of that position allocation is, is accomplished within here.
Which is what in dollars?
At least thirty thousand.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. This also includes a one-time transfer of fifty thousand to a new administrative set aside fund, and that essentially provides the EIC opportunities for funding out of that specific to, you know, various consultant studies that they may desire to have or outside professional consultation. The business development category continues to set aside.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, back up to that. Is, is that, is that not the one that is more or less about legal fees? Isn't that what that was about?
It's broadly categorized for administrative functions, you know, for instance, if, if, you know, the EIC wanted to go out and have a consultant study regarding retail, and the city just accomplished one, but if the EIC wanted to do that, this is where that would be applicable out of.
So this is more of a contingency fund than it is anything else, right?
Related to administrative, that's right.
Because that number fifty thousand isn't magical, that was actually in response to that whole legal fees question, was it not? Isn't that what that was?
Yes, EA.
That's how we came up with that number, right?
Last year, yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Um, let's see, business development, again, set aside a half a million for this next upcoming year. The ED set aside is projected to be at two million at the end of fiscal year twenty eighteen. Quality of life is one point three million. It's essentially debt service payments for the River Trail funding agreement as well as the Sports Complex funding agreement. There is a new quality of life set aside line item at two hundred and fifty thousand. Public infrastructure is one point two five million. That includes two hundred and fifty thousand allocation for workforce housing. That subcategory at the end of this fiscal year will have a total of eight hundred and fifty thousand, and then it also provides an initial allocation of one million for Legion Lift Station within that public infrastructure category based off the funding agreement approved by both you and EIC. And again, remember that was split into two fiscal years, so it's two million total, one million in each. Again, the EIC budget is included as a component unit fund within the city's overall annual budget. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the, I'm going to ask first, Mr. Vogel.
Ah, yes, what is the housing exactly for? I know we've kind of had that there for a while, was that, like, for example, the RFP on Loop Five Thirty-four, could it be used for a project like that?
Could be, yes, sir.
For use in infrastructure and things like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, also, are we saving all that reserve for something, or is that just something we're just building up for an initial, or a potential use in the future?
Mm-hmm. So at the end of fiscal year nineteen, essentially, you've got four set aside categories, the administrative, economic development, quality of life, and housing. That provides three point nine million right now at the end of that, you know, estimated fiscal year, but there's an, essentially, an unallocated cash balance of one point one nine that is, is unreserved. And I'll say unrestricted, I mean, technically, these aren't restricted either, they've just been categorized into particular set asides, but certainly, the EIC has the opportunity to, to move those around as they see fit.
Okay. Is there a reason we're not using more for Legion Lift Station?
Funding agreement, yeah, it's just.
Truly, that's something.
Agreed on a two-year, one million on each year.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Barudy?
Are you done?
No.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Also, I was made aware that somebody had said that the city might use this money for taking over property. We have no plans to do that, do we?
No, sir.
Okay.
There's a very specific legal process to have to be executed on that, and to my knowledge, there's not been any discussion of any type of condemnation.
And the city cannot use condemnation for economic development. It's prohibited by state law. And you can do it for infrastructure, and some of that might be economic development related indirectly, but you can't use it for straight-up economic development.
All right.
Well, it's good to hear, I hope that's being explained to those on EIC, because that isn't what they said at that one EIC meeting. The, the comment was, was made, that one of the EIC members was under the impression that, I believe he says, it's my feeling, that if you've got some rundown housing on, that's residing on infrastructure, the city might want to create a program to take that over and flip it. And so you might have that educational discussion with the EIC. Were you done, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I have one last question.
So, so it's my turn, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So kind of in, in line with what he was talking about with the, the set asides, I, I understand allocating things, but these, as you said, they aren't truly allocations, so.
They are truly allocations, they're not restricted funds.
Right, which just means that EIC does not have to make a budget amendment to utilize, say, money out of the economic development fund or set aside to use on a housing project or something. There's nothing, there's, there's no restriction whatsoever, it's just a guideline, right?
Generally.
So, so, well, you say generally, what's the restriction? Any restriction whatsoever, spending money sitting in the economic development set aside on a quality of life project? Is there any restriction whatsoever?
I think as they came forward with a funding agreement, we would outline which specific elements they were funding it out of.
Right, but there's no restriction preventing you from, you don't have to get approval to move that money across those set asides, correct?
No, but procedurally, there is the, the control that the council has, and that they've got to have a funding agreement. So even for the administration, there's a funding agreement.
Right, but where I'm going with this is, what's the benefit to having set asides instead of just one big bucket of cash fund balance? We've got three point nine, roughly four million at the end of eighteen. What's the, what's the point of telling them that they're in separate buckets when they're really just in one bucket? The funding agreement gets approved by council, but what difference does it make where this money is sitting in their set asides, right?
Right, so I think.
It's just a guideline for them, it's, it's like incentive to EIC members to say, we'd like you to spend some money in these categories, right?
It's expressing a priority of the EIC board in terms of where they would like to see the money spent, and also for them to have an idea that what sort of money might be left over if, in fact, those priorities came to fruition. So as, as they get all these applications coming forward, to have an understanding that, hey, we may want to set aside just a little bit for a housing project that hasn't come to us yet, rather than spend it all on, you know, some other project. So that, that's the purpose.
Okay, but like I said, seeing as how they're set asides, it's kind of like, you know, we got stuff set in front of us that we could spend it on. So at the end of. of 18, we've got 4 million. If we don't do anything in 19, we'd have 5 million. You know, of course, we're going to do something, right? So Legion Lift Station is being viewed as an economic development, and we're borrowing 2 million from EIC for the project. So why do we-
We're not borrowing. They're paying 2 million contributing towards it.
Yeah, but we're borrowing other money from somewhere else on the project. So my point was this. So we're, we're taking 2 million in cash, but we're going to borrow other money to satisfy the Legion Lift Station. If it's truly an economic development project-
But it's to offset that loan. Sorry to interrupt you.
I understand what we're doing.
We won't borrow as much as we would have otherwise.
Correct. So, letting me finish, we've got, what's the point in borrowing money from a loan when we've got, at the end of 18, another $2 million sitting in an economic development set-aside that would be interest-free? Is there a reason to, I've used this example, it's kind of like if I've got cash in my bank that's doing nothing, I have nothing on the real horizon to use it, but I'm going to go charge my bills on my credit card so I can carry a balance. Why would we do that? What's the logic for that?
Well, so Legion Lift Station is, what, 9, 10 million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And so you do that at Legion, and you don't have any money left to do projects as they come forward. So you already approved that funding agreement for Legion, the two big?
Right. I'm not suggesting that we're changing something. I'm asking the question, why didn't we use, why wouldn't we, as a policy moving forward, utilize, because these cash balances aren't getting utilized. It's one of the discussions we'll have in the KEDC presentation. So we have an economic development project in front of us. Legion Lift Station has been portrayed as an economic development, cap, capacity and whatever. So it's, it's right in front of us. So why wouldn't we use economic development cash to satisfy that? And I'm not suggesting you wipe it all out. Keep in mind, we've got 4 million in there. Some amount of it, though, might have reduced the debt service that we're paying. Again, I'm not trying to go open that funding agreement. I'm suggesting that these silos of funding are somewhat arbitrary, and they kind of are holding us back a little bit as far as-
Let's, let's, EA approach that. Comments in that regard? Why not use that money that's already there?
I think some of the comments that we heard from the EIC as we presented, as we moved forward with presenting the funding agreement, were that, you know, there was a certain pain threshold that they wanted to take on. They felt like 2 million was a reasonable contribution. I'm not sure that there was appetite for much more than that. You know, certainly, we talked about the increase in the capacity that provides for economic development, but to some degree, that facility has a capacity right now and it is replacing. So to, you know, put all of your economic development dollars to that, I don't think would be appropriate. You know, but, but, you know, there was a certain pain threshold that we went through with negotiation, and they landed on two.
Right. So I'm just trying to get people to understand the holistic approach to economic development, which would involve, I would say, capacity of, of the lift station being kind of like a seed to all other. We can't do anything else without this seed being planted. So it seems more priority than any of the others. So this is, that's the reason I'm talking about. So then, the last thing about this budget was just, I just want to clarify once again, it's not, you know, I asked Mike about it, that I thought last year, when we, we were trying to approve the EIC budget, we were effectively approving the, the line item spending for things like the city admin, the 180,000 or whatever. Is this when we're approving that? Like, we're, we're not going to see, the 180,000, the city admin stuff, are we going to see something to us to approve that, or is this when we're approving that? And same with the EIC spending of 140. I'm not suggesting we change it. I'm just asking, is that what we're doing?
The EIC for KEDC agreement?
Yeah, and the city admin, the 180,000 that we're talking about.
So that one was, the EIC-KDC was slightly different, because that was the third year of a three-year agreement. And so, you know, essentially, there wasn't an agreement that came back before this body, because it was just contemplating the finality of that third year.
So, so we're going to see a new funding agreement, it's EIC's funding agreement with KEDC. That's going to be brought to us later.
That's correct.
And so what about the 180? Is that, is that us approving it now?
I, I don't think so.
It's not approving it now. We will bring an additional-
Yeah, because that's a year-to-year.
That's right.
So that's a contract, too?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all.
Yeah, okay. Peggy McKay, would you like to speak to this? And then I've got, I've got one thing.
Peggy McKay, P.O. Box 291464, Kerrville. A lot of the discussion was about exactly what I was wondering about, because I noticed, too, that the economic development portion of the EIC budget going through 2023 were up to about 4 and 1/2 million, and it looked as though someone must have a project in mind to be building cash up for an economic development project. And then along comes the lift station, the Legion Lift Station, and that's what I was questioning and wondering. If this is an economic development project, would this not qualify for more funds from EIC? Because it's economic development. But it was along the same line. It just looks like with the increase through 2023, to have a large amount of money, it, it appears that there is, someone has a project in mind in addition to the 2 million that was put into the lift station. And if I understand correctly, 534 can't be developed unless we get the lift station on, and if there's anything done on the Peterson Farm Road property, it too is going to draw from the Legion Lift Station. So it looks to me this is a multiple type of benefit in projects, but it doesn't seem to be getting the funding in proportion.
Okay. To respond to a couple of things. One, is that, is that actually true? Is the Loop 534 property going to go through the Legion Lift Station?
Part of it. There's a, there's a ridge there where some of it goes in another direction. So I think that-
The bulk of it's going to Legion?
It goes in a different direction. It's not part of Legion. Legion serves everything in the downtown, all the way over to Shriner, and then also the airport area.
Okay, so the, the RFP that we've got out, that property is-
It's a different lift station.
Okay, so that was the first thing. And then I think she asked the question, which already got answered before, which was, the Legion Lift Station could have used more EIC money, which I think is what you asked, but we didn't ask for it. So that's kind of what I was, you know, anyways.
One, one point in the midst of all this, I, I think that the issue raised by Mr. Rudy about, you know, if you've got cash already, you know, then how does that impact or how should it impact any loans, that kind of thing? And I think that's a question to continue to ask. I will say, in regard to our indebtedness on this project, the, through the Texas Water Development Board, the money we are getting from them for the Legion Lift Station is at 1 and 3/4% interest, which is awfully good. Yeah. All right.
I just want to say one thing. I mean, I did press Mike, pressed to speak. There are other things planned that get verbalized. They're not always on this report, but as we've talked amongst ourselves with the 2050 committees and in-house with our own meetings when I have with the city manager, there are going to be things that are going to require funding that aren't necessarily on, they're not being requested yet, but some of the set-aside will get used for something other than the lift station. So, I mean, I'm just thinking of the things I know about, and I'm sure there's a lot more that I don't know about, so.
There's, there's a ton, but the pot of money at EIC is really a first-come, first-served situation. So if we don't have a, if we have a legitimate project in there, we ought to give it some serious consideration. But to the interest rate thing, that is the straight-up interest rate, but the actual cost of that money after the fees is going to be more like 2 and 1/2. Still a really good rate, but it's 2 and 1/2% more than zero, which is what cash would be, right? So anyways.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this? If we do have a motion, we have a second? We've got a second. All in favor indicate by yes. All against by no. Okay, and it passes five oh. That's eight C, budget for the city of Kerrville. All right, eight D, and Mike and Walt, Mike Whitler and Walt Kanig, present this presentation of the Kerrville Economic Development Corporation, and funding requests also include business plan and budget.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Mike Whitler. I am currently the president of the board for the Kerr Economic Development Corporation, and I just wanted to start by thanking you for taking the time to hear our request for funding for the next fiscal year. We're starting our eighth year of, of working here in Kerr County, and our board is comprised of representatives from the county, the city, K-Pub, the CBB, the EIC, KISD, the Chamber of Commerce, and, and business members as well. And this past year's been an interesting one for us. At the beginning of the year, there were prudent questions raised about the effectiveness of, of our efforts, and so we did some work. We got an impact study, and, you know, and had some debate here about the validity of the study even, and even took that feedback, and, and we're going to go and look and see who else we can get in the area to do impact studies in the future based on, on the feedback. And then we also contracted with our engaged Avalanche Consulting out of Austin to facilitate some strategic planning sessions the past year, this past winter. Part of that was looking at how communities structure their economic development organizations and the tools that they use. And those, those sessions led to the development of our 2018 to 22, 22 business plan. That was included in, in the funding requests that we sent to you several weeks ago, along with the proposed budget. The, the business plan has four areas of primary focus and also addresses performance metrics, marketing, communications, and stakeholder and investor relations. We, we're basically releasing out of all these efforts what some of us are referring to as KEDC 2.0, and, and the big thing in there is that we've partnered with the chamber to, to try to do a more efficient job, and so that's why Walt's here, and, and he is now officially our CEO as well. We also, another big thing out of there was getting additional stakeholder participation on our board. Two representatives from the city, so we'll have one from council and one from the administrative staff, and then two representatives from, from the county as well. So, you know, at the forefront of all of this is, is really that relationship or this partnership with the chamber. We're expecting that'll improve efficiencies and streamline resources. Over this past year, we had 100% employee turnover, but the board members really stepped up to keep things moving. We continued to support the GO team with application support and impact studies, and a big part of that credit is due to Walt as well. We're looking forward to working on action items where we're identified as, as, as one of the responsible parties for working on those in the 2050 plan. Our, our proposed budget is in line with previous year's budgets. We're requesting 24,500 each from the city, county, and K-Pub, and 140,000 from the EIC. So at a high level, the next fiscal year, our budget will have a beginning balance of 111,500, total income from stakeholder funding of 213,500, normal expenses of 258,500 and, or 258,500, and then an ending balance of 66,500. We anticipate that as, I guess, some of the plans and programming for action items in, in our plan and the Kerrville 2050 plan get clarified, that, that we'll have some need for that, that funding. Again, we appreciate all the past support and hope that, that we can count on your support in the future. And I'm going to go ahead and turn things over to Walt, let him talk about the partnership and organization.
Yeah, let me figure out how to make this work. Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to y'all tonight. I have a brief set of slides to talk through what has been the fruit of a lot of effort on a lot of people's part. As Mike indicated, we have a great board that has brought us through a very challenging year together. That board is representative of all stakeholders, and all stakeholders had a piece of this business plan and resultant restructuring approach. I want to personally thank Mike. In a year where his wife gave birth to a new baby, he did a yeoman's job in terms of just being there, being a great right hand, being, being someone that was just 100% behind this, and his work was just outstanding. So Mike was an outstanding asset to the community and to the EDC, and likewise, the board was. So thank you so much for that. I'm going to go through this rather quickly. Basically, we looked, as Mike said, at a lot of different options as far as how we approach economic development and a mission for the KEDC. Fragmented and reactive efforts clearly in the past led to suboptimal results. We don't want to keep doing the same thing over and over again while expecting different results. That's not Einstein's quote. I did look that up. It's not attributable, but it is a valid point, and we really strove to make some substantial changes, both organizationally and procedurally, to ensure that we capture the great set of opportunities that our current very buoyant macroeconomic environment had for us as a community. Under the unified operation and the common leadership of the chamber and myself, a holistic approach to economic development will be achieved to a greater extent than we've seen in the past, and we'd be looking at a full range of economic development issues, ranging from helping existing businesses with their expansion needs, to supportive regional efforts, to a more diversified economic base. We'll be looking at doing recruitment of primary jobs, as has been the primary mission for the EDC in the past, but we'll also be looking and working in concert with the city, with the county, and with other entities to ensure that we capture the broad range of opportunities, including hospitality, including retail, including others in a support role. And we're working right now to define what those roles are and what those processes look like. New organization does support two of the key guiding principles for economic development resulted from the 2050 comprehensive plan. I was involved as the, as the chairman of that subcommittee, and the subcommittee came up with a number of guiding principles, number one and number two, where the holistic approach to economic development, looking at the entire picture, and the development of processes and procedures which are clear, understandable, and usable by all interested parties. The proposed organization chart is very straightforward. The two boards will maintain their integrity. EDC board in this case will be expanded to allow some additional participation from the city and from the county under our current plan. I will serve as president and CEO of both organizations. However, both organizations will maintain separate budgets and enlarge separate staffs. Where it makes sense to share staff in the mutually needed areas of finance, HR, and IT, we will see some shared, shared effort there. This plan will include the hiring of a VP COO position to take control and be responsible for some of the day-to-day operations within the EDC, and we are right now in the process of that job search and expect to have that position filled in the early October timeframe. What this is not, and I want to stress this very clearly, as this has been expressed as a concern before, this is not an effort to give any kind of advantage or any kind of increased opportunity set to any chamber membership. In fact, this plan will specifically separate those two organizations, and I got to confess, with over almost 1,000 members, I'm not even sure who's in the ch-
with over almost a thousand members, I'm not even sure who's in the chamber or not, this is about capturing the opportunity and doing what's right for the community. I'll make another couple of points which are important. The chamber will provide services to the KEDC through a one-year agreement that has off-ramps by either party with 90 days' notice, and we will continue to have a dedicated professional staff on the EDC side, as I said before, with the recruitment of the new We have some immediate priorities that we've already begun to work on. First of all, as I said before, is the recruitment of an excellent, and I say excellent, VP COO for the EDC. Within the context of the chamber, I believe we'll have much better opportunity to bring high-quality people in and retain them. I'll remind everybody, we've had turnover of staff at EDC, and that's one of the endemic problems that we've seen in the past, and one which I believe this amalgamation and team approach will eliminate or minimize in the future. We're gonna work on completing the reengineering of the processes and procedures with the city, county, the EIC. We have a meeting tomorrow, as an example, to continue our discussions in this regard, and we are making progress. We want to make sure we're clear and consistent with respect to those applying for funds, as well as understanding the integration of all the stakeholders and the comprehensive plan into the process, and we want to do that in a very, very seamless way. We're gonna be working on more proactive marketing, if I can say, over the last year, based on past events and challenges, we have essentially been purely reactive from the economic development standpoint in this community, purely reactive. We're not proactively going out there and seeking opportunity, we're reacting to it. We gotta turn the table and go on offense. I compliment the city for some of the efforts they've undertaken recently, including the retail study, which gives us a lot of additional information and some entree into markets that we wouldn't have been looking at before, and we will continue to support the city's efforts in this regard. We're gonna improve our property database so that we can understand the site selection and sites we have in the city, we've got some great sites in the city, we will make sure we market them appropriately as part of this proactive effort. We're gonna be more proactive in trade show, and we're gonna lay out a game plan to do that, because that's one of the best ways we can reach, as I understand it, many of the site selectors who are some of the key decision-makers. And we're gonna increase our work with site selectors, leveraging off current successes. We have a closing tomorrow for a major project, the one that we're aware of at the O'Connell Lodge site. That process has gone very well, and it's been a very good teamwork effort between chamber, EDC, city, and other stakeholders, and I believe that that particular developer is very pleased with the experience he's had with doing business with us, and I'm confident that he will not only continue to look for opportunities to do more, but also pass that word around, and that word of mouth is very important. Mike went over the budgets, I just want to go over some of the assumptions that drove the budget. Essentially, we have a do-over from last year, if we look at beginning and ending balance and requested operating expenses. Our ask is 140K from EIC, 25 from each of the city, 24, 5, excuse me, from each of the city, county, and K-Pub, and expenses are essentially the same, though they're allocated slightly differently. I'll note that this plan includes a one-off executive recruitment charge, and we did elect to go with an executive recruiter to fill the VP CO slot, and I think that was a great decision. Some will come this year, and some will be allocated in the next year's budget. The Chamber of Commerce, in order to show their support for this particular approach, has agreed to give the EDC personnel offices free of charge, free of charge, so that's a way that the chamber can contribute and has elected to contribute to this process. We've allocated 100K salary for the VP COO position, and based on our understanding of the market, this is going to allow us to get the kind of candidate we're looking The chamber agreement for the economic development, admin, staff, finance, IT services, including my own contribution, is included in the current budget, obviously, and the assumptions in terms of timing are, I'll admit, optimistic. Starts with one August for the chamber agreement, which has been done, but we, our VP CO, we'd like selected by the first week of October, though we don't anticipate them starting for some time thereafter, because there's a high likelihood that they'll currently be working in another job and need to disengage, excuse me, from that position. This is very detailed, and it matches what you all have been submitted in terms of our formal budget request. This shows a breakdown of all the various areas, I'm sure we'll dive into some of these numbers in a minute, but again, it's essentially a do-over from last year. We have a lower ending balance than we had a beginning balance, and I believe that this gives us sufficient funds to, not only to hire the staff we're looking for, but also position ourselves well to begin addressing these opportunities that, over the past year, regrettably, we've been missing. And with that, I'll open you, be open to your questions.
I want to say thank you very much for the presentation. Years ago, I was on the Economic Development Foundation Board, and I have been in touch with the economic, KDC directors and worked with them over the years. I appreciate what you've done in the past. I want to just say two or three things in regard to the plan. I really appreciate what you're looking at in terms of the five-year higher-wage job creation strategy. How do we get better wages for more folks in this community, and that is a real concern? I think the other thing, your emphasis on working with existing businesses to expand and to strengthen those, so it's not just the KDC going out to attract businesses, which you want to do, but it's also that continuing local emphasis. And then the other is the development of talent, of working to strengthen our economy through that development of talent, so I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
I would also like to say I'm delighted that you are looking at present businesses and helping them to grow, not just necessarily bringing in new people. Have you, do you have any benchmarks that kind of have been set, or is it too soon for that?
Well, I'm a private sector business guy, okay? I've been an executive in the telecoms industry for 20 years, and I've done economic development for nearly 10. I would say that I'm a metrics-driven person, and actually, as a backup slide, I have defined some of the metrics that we'll be using to measure our performance, and these are the metrics that we'll be using to report back to all our stakeholders, city, EIC, K-Pub, county. As to our progress, I'm a big numbers person, I want to make sure that the investments being made on an ongoing basis are giving that kind of return, because that's the kind of regime I've worked my whole career around. Average wage is important, but there's a lot of other metrics. Utilization of 4B, but B-funding, I think, is a very important one, and we talked about that earlier, and I'll just make a brief comment. Do we spend the money now on a known project, do we spend the money later on unknown or projected projects? It's really up to all the stakeholders to kind of figure out how to do that kind of balance act, because we want to be in a position to jump on opportunities that are gonna be presenting themselves, and we don't want to overly leverage ourselves in terms of that. So we have to, as a group, figure out what that balance is, and I'm certainly gonna be happy and willing and able to contribute to that kind of discussion going forward.
Okay, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you, you mentioned retail, are we actually pursuing retail now? Because before, I don't think y'all were, KEDC's are doing retail.
Well, KEDC's not doing retail.
Okay.
The city's the lead on retail.
Does y'all have a...
We are, however, supporting those efforts, and we're supporting it in the ways that the city asks us to support it. I think, again, as I said before, I applaud the city's initiative, based on the comprehensive plan output, to define opportunities through analysis and through number generation as far as what our market size is, greater than 100,000, that's good, what our leakage points are, we know those specific areas, what our covered points are, we know that those are areas that we don't need to recruit, and given this information, we can be more proactive in terms of going out to the marketplace and finding the right business opportunities for our community. When I first came here a year and a half ago, the question was, do we need more retail or not? The answer is yes to both. We need more of certain kinds of retail and not all kinds of retail. Now we're beginning to understand our market, we're beginning to understand the opportunity, and we're beginning to craft a message that will be compelling to top-notch companies to encourage them to come here, and I applaud the city's efforts on that.
I have a few more questions, Mayor.
Yeah, sure.
What is the 66,000 for? I don't quite understand, you have it listed for the 2050 plan, what's...
Our ending balance?
Yeah, how are you planning on spending?
That's our ending balance. It's not a slush fund or residual, it's actually lower than our beginning balance by a substantial number. That's gonna be for use as we launch into next year. Bear in mind, this is a one-year agreement, okay? This is a one-year agreement. We have to have contingencies for what's gonna happen the next year. It's a 90-day cancelable agreement, and I believe it's just prudent to have some balance there to handle those uncertainties. But also, as we talked about before, if you look at the budget here, we've got very little in terms of marketing, in terms of programs, in terms of trade show support. In fact, when we presented at the EIC, the question was raised, and I think reasonably, are you really asking for enough? Do you have a gun but no bullets? Are you sure that you can make progress, given the modest nature of your request? And I point to the balance, the $66,000, as some bullets, potentially, and I believe they will be. And I do not have any problem, as I said to the EIC, coming back with well-thought-out requests for further funding, should those be required. So, that's what it is.
So, I still don't understand, there's nothing that it's for, it's just to move on to the next year?
Well, I can go through...
Just 66,000 to have for next year?
Okay, I can go through all these, many of these. I've got allocated some money for marketing, I'm not sure what that's for. It's for marketing, we gotta figure that out. I gotta get somebody on board who's gonna be good, we're gonna work together as a team, we're gonna figure it out amongst all the stakeholders and the board, or as, excuse me, as represented on the board, and we're gonna figure out what to do with that. So, it's not allocated, it's not gonna be wasted, it's for all of the things I just described.
Okay. All right, now, the last question is, how do you decide on what better wages are? I know the mayor mentioned that you're looking for jobs for better wages, what's, what do you put up against?
Well, I would invite you to take a look at the business plan that we produced, it's very comprehensive, and it followed the same kind of spirit of the comprehensive plan in that it was involving of all the stakeholders involved. A lot of people contributed to that plan, but it's gonna be a combination of different things. It's going to be recruitment of certain companies to come here with higher-wage jobs. It's gonna be training people here locally to assume higher-wage jobs that we believe will be created in the health industry and other key industries. It's going to be helping entrepreneurship and helping startups, because we know many entrepreneurial companies produce a much higher average wage than hourly worker kind of companies do. So it's gonna be a combination of things. Please take a look at the business plan, I think it really spells it out in very clear detail, not only in terms of the strategy and the tactics, but in terms of the specific action items we'll be undertaking to get there.
Okay.
I just had a question about the VP COO, because it seems like that would be a real critical part to the picture, as far as interviewing that person, would that be a team of people?
Yeah, I assisted on that.
From various stakeholders, or...
And Mayor Blackburn was involved in the board discussion around this. I want us all to own this decision as a board. The board has allocated three individuals to be the key decision-makers, but the board will be part of the, there'll be an initial funnel of candidates, running from 10 to 5 to 3 to 1. The board will be evolved at the 10 candidate level, and the final, the three appointed board subcommittee members will handle the final decision. And I think that's the right way to do it.
I hope you have a bunch.
Well, we have five local candidates, which is very interesting, and that's one of the reasons, frankly, that we're motivated to go with an external search firm, to round out the candidates to a larger group, but also to fairly manage, without bias, the local candidate field, because, you know, people that step up into this environment certainly show courage, nothing else, so that's good.
All right, Mr. Rudy.
Okay, so I got a few questions, but mostly, well, the first one's a cleanup, well, in my head, it's a cleanup one. I've talked to you about it before, it's not a big deal, and it doesn't matter to our agreement, but it seemed to me that EIC's putting money in, city, Curville, county, K-Pub. It might be good for the chamber to actually list that they're putting money in, because you are with the free rent.
Yeah, I think that that's great.
And if it got listed as an expense, then you take credit, and it might be an answer to some chamber members that might see a blending of the two, where they'd rather see a definite line, but that's a...
No, I think that's an excellent suggestion, we're going with that adjustment.
But the other is, is all about this, in my mind, what KEDC's role really is. The business plan's great, the metrics that are up here, it's all good, you know, there's other ways to do it, but regardless, frankly, from the city's standpoint, and I would argue from each of the stakeholders that are really putting stuff in, it's really just a, it's a fee-for-service consultant being paid to provide some sort of result. And I, I'm less interested, to be honest with you, about y'all's budget and your business plan as much as the metrics, because it's really, I mean, any consultant, we're paying you some money, we're expecting something. And so, these are good metrics, before approving a spending or funding agreement, I'd like to see what the benchmarks are for the metrics.
Okay.
And so, and I've spoken with you and Mr. Whitler both, I'll be honest, most of them, they're all good, but there's only two that I think really get at what I see the role of KEDC is, which is to essentially get at the job situation, you know? And so, the average wage and utilization of 4B funding are the two, I'd like to see what movement we'd like to see on the average wage, because I would imagine that's what we're talking about, you know, from year to year, what's the trend difference? And in the utilization of 4B funding, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, what percent are we calling a success and what aren't we? And so, I'd like to see that, and, because I really just see KEDC as a black box entity, you know, I...
Well, we want to, we want to change that.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but...
We really do, and I think both those are suggestive, that's goal-setting within the metrics, and I think that that's very legitimate and part of our projected process, and I certainly look forward to reporting back against that request in the future, because it's a sensible thing to do, and we want to do that, because you don't know how you're doing unless you see what your attainment of goal percentages are, and we're gonna do that. As far as characterizing this relationship as being a consultant, consultee relationship, I wouldn't characterize it that way. It was a convenient way for us to bring the organizations together using a service agreement model, so we could maintain the integrity of the boards, the separation of the budgets, and the allocation of the staff in a meaningful way. But what you got here really is more of a new team that's being put together, of people who will be working together in ways they've not worked together before to achieve superior results. That's how I characterize it. It's not, I'm not here to provide a service, I'm here to be part of a team which is providing a result, and that's really how I view it, and I believe in that very strongly. I'll say this, not to be self-serving in any way, but I didn't seek this. I am very interested in economic development, I have a lot of experience in it, I think we have great potential here, that potential's shown in our comprehensive planning process, that potential's shown in a fantastic macroeconomic environment that we're enjoying, not only in Texas, but in the United States. I'm excited about the opportunities we have, and I look forward to working with all of us in this room, including the audience, to grab those opportunities and make them real, because we all have a role to play in that, and we all have to work together to do that, and I'm happy to lead that effort from the EDC side.
Okay, so, just to go back to, so, it's right, in a working relationship, we're viewing it as a team, but we're gonna end up with a funding agreement, so in order to make funding agreements work, you have to have accountability, so that's really all I meant when I'm saying it's a black box entity. Yes, we're all gonna team up to make everybody... Yes, we're all going to team up to make everybody a success, but the only way to know what that success is, is to set those benchmarks. And in keeping with that, and kind of tied to the, the question of Mr. Vocal, is, you know, the, in the, in the past year, we, the stakeholders, mostly EIC, but actually everybody else, if you knew how that money got there in the first place, paid in money last year, and so, they were, they were, while everybody on the board, I'm sure, did yeoman's work to keep things going, the, the balance that's there of 112,000 is actually representing undelivered services, essentially, because we paid for salaries that didn't effectively work, right, because they weren't here. And so, I, I would say that what, what you should be bringing to us, besides these metrics, is an amount of money that you need to do what your metrics are going to provide. And the, if, if there's some 66,000 that you're planning on spending to provide those metrics, then throw it into the, the total and say that you're asking for, instead of, what, 217, you're asking for 280, or whatever the number ends up being, and just say that's what you're asking for to provide the, these metrics. And we can get away from this, I would say, kind of silly notion of a reserve in a organization that's actually a fee-for-service organization, you know, to, to have a carrying over balance when you're fully funded by stakeholders seems a little bit strange to me.
Well, I, that's been an ongoing issue with you, because I've, I've hadn't known you that long, and I know that's always something, something you can, you consistently bring up.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you there. It's, it's not an ongoing issue with me, it's an ongoing issue with clients paying money to their consultants, so they're going to want to know where there's money's going. So, go on with your explanation.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I would characterize it differently. I respect what I hear from you, certainly. It's not a, it's not a reserve, it's a residual balance in a, a, a given fiscal year is a snapshot of a longer set of years. You start with a balance, you end with a balance. And, and we started with a bigger balance than we're ending with. And I wanted to do that, because I wanted to send the message that we're really going to be focusing on those results. But to end up with zero, and then not having even to carry over into the next month, isn't the way I've ever run a business before. And I view this as kind of, kind of, kind of-
Okay, well, last year, last summer, we were told by the then-director that if they didn't spend the reserve that they were going to hold last year, that of course we'd give it back, okay, to the stakeholders. Essentially, all I'm suggesting to you is not to give it back. I'm saying, come to us with what you're going to spend that on, and I'd be glad to let you have it, as long as it produces metrics. If you're just saying that I'll figure it out later, then I'm kind of questioning, what am I buying with the money that I'm giving you? So, just, all I'm suggesting is, put them in as a line item, you, you started to talk about marketing, put that in, and say that's going to get us metrics that we can quantify, and, and then we have a, we have a relationship we can actually hold each other accountable for.
Fair.
Okay.
I'll take that under advisement.
Anything else before we move on? All right, we have, we've got a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to draft a new KEDC service agreement, and with a few things that you, you know, you agreed that you would satisfy Councilman Buridi with as a tagline later, but I'd like to recommend that direct staff to do that at this time.
Okay. We have, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All right. All in favor say yes, all opposed say no. All right, and it passes 5-0.
Okay, so, just to be clear, what we just did was give direction to staff to enter into negotiation of this new funding agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Good job with you, you guys keep up the good work.
Why don't we march on through? Okay, AD, official presentation of the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget and resolution 32-2018.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We'll get the presentation up here. Thank you. So, after a month's of work at the staff level and two workshops with the Council, today we're presenting, or I'm presenting my official proposed budget for your consideration. Just on the outset, I'm just going to say that you're not going to see a whole lot of differences between what you saw through your workshops, but there are some differences, and I'll point those out. I want to also thank the staff for the hard work that they've put in getting us to this point. We started months and months ago at this process, like we normally do each year. And this year in particular, I want to thank Amy Dozier, our CFO, for compiling this 245-page document of very thorough information.
I'd like to just interject and add special thanks to Amy as well, because I, I truly do appreciate the added value of the data that we received, so, thanks.
Okay, so, the next slide is just our calendar and our process, and from this, you can see where we are outlined in red. This is a bit different than the schedule that you saw in your workshops, because our effective tax rate is actually higher than our current tax rate. We do not have to hold public hearings on the tax rate, but we would certainly hold public hearings on the budget itself, which includes a tax rate. So, we're not really basically subject to truth and taxation laws as it pertains to the public hearing process. So, that allows us to finish up the process in the middle of September, as opposed to the end of September, which, for us, that's great, because then we have time to roll the budget forward and get ready for the new year, as opposed to scrambling at the last minute and trying to get that done. So, that's why we have the schedule laid out for, for you the way that we do right now. So, this is, again, just the presentation of the budget. You'll see on the 28th where we, we would have the public hearing, as you'll call at the end of this. But obviously, at the end of the presentation, I'd be happy to respond to any questions if you, we could hold those until the end. So, this next slide is just an outline of what we've, a summary of the highlights that we've got in the budget pertaining to Curville 2050. And so, you can see there's a number of items listed, 14 altogether, everything from more tourism programming, drainage master plan, big projects with, some of which were discussed tonight, like Legion Lift Station, our public safety complex study, golf course enhancements, the list goes on. And I'll, I'll get into more of these in detail as we move through the budget. So, at a very high level, this is all funds, this is on page 14 of your actual budget, and on most of these slides, you'll see a corresponding page to the proposed budget that has a lot more detail. So, this will be summary in nature. But a total of $75.1 million program, and this represents a 13% increase over last year's, probably due to programming that was put into place last year as far as funding to fund this year's projects. And those would be capital funding, not operation and maintenance. The general fund and the water and sewer fund are balanced to current revenues to current expenditures. The largest budgets we have are operating budgets of the general fund and the water and sewer fund. We are also keeping our reserve requirements, actually, we're a little bit high above those reserve requirements of 25%. And then, debt service expense, in terms of budget to budget, is actually down $200,000 when you can include both water and sewer and general fund debt service expenditures. This does not include EIC budget, that's a component unit, so technically, it's not part of our budget, but we do reflect it as a separate budget in the document. So, on the next slide, we're going to get right into general fund, and again, this is our largest operating fund. First of all, talking about this year and how we think we might end this year. We are anticipating lower than budgeted revenues and expenditures still at this point, but, but we'll still end up the year in a positive position, because our expenditures will be less. We still think we may not reach our budgeted revenues, but again, our spending would be less, and, and so therefore, the, the net positive position. As discussed during your work, budget workshops, we are proposing to draw down a healthy fund balance, based upon fiscal year '17 audited numbers, and that I'll get into more in a moment, to, to do some one-time things as well. And that, that would be the, a total of $900,000 to finance the accumulated deficit in the golf fund, some program capital expenditures for both general and wastewater purposes, and then asset replacement. So, to do that, staff will be bringing you all an action item in October with those amendments to be able to, to put that transfer into place. And then, one other item we've also done with this budget is, for the first time, is we programmed a new fund balance reserve for contractual commitments that are ongoing. This next slide then moves into the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. It is balanced at $27.2 million. The property tax does remain the same at 55 cents, 55.14 cents. As I said earlier, it's lower than the effective rate. Again, the projected fund balance exceeds our requirement by policy of 25%. It does include salary and pay plan adjustments for police and fire, which I'll get into more detail later, six new positions. And then, we're also splitting out the development services fund as a separate fund to bring more focus to cost of service and for monitoring process and technology improvements, as well, staff resources more closely. On the revenue side, no, no surprise here, property tax and sales tax are the largest sources of revenue, 61% of total revenue combined. The next largest source is service fees, which is emergency medical and ambulance services, and then solid waste services. And for the first time, we expect that we would get a reimbursement from the state for uncovered medical claims related to Medicare, or Medicaid, excuse me, of 200,000. And then, street use fee, we've heard a lot from you all and the community about the need to invest more in our streets. So, we are proposing to increase our street use fee, which was added for the first time last year by 1%. That'd be a total of 3% of gross revenues on the water and sewer side, which generates another 126,000, so we're increasing the streets budget for street maintenance by 126,000 accordingly. Other fee adjustments are also included, like that new escort fee for oversized loads, which you all have recently discussed, some small fee increases and other facilities and services like Curville-Shriner Park, and other items that are detailed, beginning on page 229 in your budget, and those that are changing are highlighted in the budget document. Now, let's talk specifically about property tax. So, here in the chart that you see, you'll see the proposed rate that was proposed last year versus this year, the actual adopted rate, the effective rate, and the rollback rate. So, the effective rate, as you all know, is designed to show what rate we need to raise the same amount of revenue as the prior year. And this year's effective rate, as I said, is 55.38 cents, and it's lower than the current rate. Every one cent change in the tax rate would generate $130,000. If we were to move our tax rate up to the effective rate, it would generate approximately $30,000. I think this next graph really shows the whole story when it comes to property tax revenue. Our assessed value has grown by 2.2%, but the net taxable value has only grown by 1.5%. This is the smallest increase that we've had or growth since the recession, and this is after a healthy year of growth, last year of 6%. While new constructions remained fairly healthy, reappraisals rendered by KCAD are a concern. Many commercial values have dropped significantly, and we'll be looking into that more closely. But this is our certified role, and this is what we'll be working with. At the same time, the value of property frozen since 2006, when that was put into place, continues to increase, and the frozen taxable value is $573 million, and it's up 3.2% from last year. So, this is now turning to sales tax, more detail on page 29 of your budget document. As you know, this is our more volatile revenue source. We feel the impact of what's happening at the register within 60 days of it happening, unlike the property tax, which is set for the whole year. Conservatively, we're projecting 2.75% growth over the current year estimate. After several months of trending down, we have seen improvement over the last three months, but we are still projecting a shortfall in sales tax, which is being made up by other measures to keep the budget in line. Every 1% additional projection that we make as far as increasing sales tax, every 1% equates to an additional $69,000. Okay, now, on the expenditure side, again, we're balanced at $27.2 million. Our core services of public safety and street services make up a majority of our budget in the general fund, at 63% of the total. By category, you can see the personnel is the greatest expense, which is typical of a service-related business. Now, on the public safety side, as I mentioned earlier with regard to the salary adjustments, the cost of all those is $400,000. That compares to last year, where they had their 2% COLA adjustment, which was about $200,000, so definitely increasing funding here in the public safety world. We have a 2% COLA, or cost of living, increase effective October 1st, restructuring of our step plans to eliminate that compression issue when promotions occur. And then, we also have the usual 4% step increases that they're eligible for every other year. The total budgets for police and fire are increasing by 4.3% and 4.9% respectively. Fire expenses are growing a little bit more due to the need to replace some bunker gear and the fact that we're maintaining four stations and the costs associated with that. The total number of positions both proposed in police and fire remains the same at 72 and 77 positions respectively. This next chart here shows you in highlighted areas which departments we would be adding positions in the general fund. If you look back to pre-recession, to fiscal year 10, then we are now, just now getting back to the staffing levels that we had almost 10 years ago. This is indeed a lean operation here at the City of Curville. In parks, we're proposing a total of four new positions to maintain Curville-Shriner Park, the new sports complex, and more programming for special events in the community and for tourists. In engineering, one new construction inspector that would allow us to keep up with all the public and private construction, of public improvements, and also performance of plan reviews for projects through development services. And then finally, a new project manager-level position, partially supported by EIC, that we talked about earlier this evening, that's proposed to support downtown economic development and housing initiatives outlined in Curville 2050. And then finally, with regard to salary adjustments, for general government and utility fund employees, it's programmed at an average of 3% adjustments based upon performance or merit. Now, turning to our second-largest fund, which is our water and sewer fund, these are some highlights here, balanced at $12.5 million. We are programming, for the first time since 2011, some rate adjustments on the volumetric side. So, on your water and sewer rates, there's a base account fee, and then you pay for what you use per 1,000 gallons. And it escalates at their conservation rates, so they escalate the more that you use. So, these rate adjustments are projected to not just fund current needs, but often to the future, with our 10-year plan that we have, and our five-year plan for operations, 10-year plan on the capital side, and more about all that in a moment. We have also projected a first full year of revenues from reuse water sales, and we included new projected debt service for Legion Lift Station. On revenues, water sales and sewer service fees are close to being equal with regard to how this, this fund is supported. And as I said earlier, reuse sales are now included for new customers like Curville Sports Complex and Shriner University. Details of projected sales are provided on page 94 of, of your document. With regard to proposed rate adjustments, you can see here in this chart how we would compare to some of our benchmark cities on the volumetric side in total costs. Curville is highlighted in yellow or orange on the screen. On the far right, you see our today's rate, and then in '19, what the rate would be if you all accepted the proposal of 4% water and 2% sewer increases. And then, moving on to, from the left side, Curville in '20 and Curville in '21, still, even with those- still, even with those adjustments, very competitive. And this assumes that these other cities and entities are not going to adjust the rates, which they are. We've already heard that SAWs is looking at a four point seven percent increase, and Flugerville is a six point two percent increase, and I've heard from the Fredericksburg City Manager that they're looking at increases as well. So we remain very competitive on, on the water side. To give you kind of an idea about what that impact that has to the average customer, the average user uses fifty-eight hundred gallons a month, and so if you applied the new rates, that would result in a dollar thirty-one increase per month. And just keep in mind that the increase does not apply to the whole bill, because the whole bill includes garbage as well as, as sales tax and other things. On this slide, this is a new graph that you did not see during your workshops, and we produced it based upon some of the discussions that we had at the workshop level. You'll see since twenty-twelve and now twenty-nineteen that our operating expenses have grown by two million dollars. And this does not include debt service, this does not include capital spending, this is just operation and maintenance, most of it personnel. At the same time, the rate increase that we're asking for is only generating about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this rate increases covers a lot of different things as we look out ten years on the capital side and five years on the operating side. To be able to have an impact and compound for an impact later on is part of the, the strategy as well. The other thing that I want to point out is last time we had rate increases in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve, those were pretty hefty increases. So the idea here is that you do these small incremental increases when you need them in a responsible way as opposed to waiting until it becomes a dire situation, and you've got double-digit increases on your customers like we had in twenty-twelve and twenty-eleven. This next slide gets into the expenditure side of the ledger. We have included first-year debt for Legion Lift Station, as I mentioned earlier. We've also included one new chief operator position for water distribution, and then we also have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency. I think it was lower than that last year, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand last year. But this is to cover unforeseen expenses like large repairs of replacement of wells for, for, I'm sorry, replacement of pumps for wells or large equipment in our plants, like we have seen this very year, where we've been able to use some contingency to cover those expenses. And then also, we have that one percent increase in the street use fee that I mentioned earlier when we were talking about general fund. Okay, now, capital projects. So now we're moving into capital funds. This year, you can see here from the slide, the big projects are Legion Lift Station, which we talked about tonight. We also are looking ahead to TTHM mitigation. You won't see debt service for that in this year, but in your budget document, you'll see ten-year capital plans that are constrained, which what I mean by that is it shows funding and it shows expenditures. It's not just a wish list, it's a plan forward to how we would fund some of these items. So the, the budget also includes in nineteen, one point eight million dollars for a variety of projects related to our plants, like the oxidation ditch or the clarifier, but also wells, potential new well, and then planning, planning for a new wastewater or sewer master plan. It's due to be updated, and then long-range water plan, which is already underway, and a new item, the additional system looping, which we're going to try to look at opportunities to loop some of our systems so that we can keep fresh water in our system longer. Now, we have asset replacement, and this is again on the water sewer side, you can see the whole list of items here. Very expensive equipment, but thankfully, we plan for that in our asset replacement program and have accumulating funds to proceed with funding these items here. Debt service. So these are the latest figures from our financial advisor, maybe a little bit different than the last version you saw. Actual rates may be lower, but at this point, we are looking at a hundred and thirty basis points cheaper than if we would have gone on to the open market for the Legion Lift Station and a hundred and thirty-five basis points, because it's another year out for TTHM mitigation. And this compares again to the open market rates if we were to be doing COs. So we've already layered in additional issuances of COs in twenty-twenty-three and then twenty-twenty-seven to fund projects that are laid out in that same ten-year plan. As I mentioned earlier, it shows funding and it shows the expenditures that go along with that. Now, back to, to general capital projects, we do have some cash funding that's programmed for some projects in next year that are general in nature, not utilities. So the tennis center renovation, which is already moving forward, as you all know, that would be EIC-funded, the downtown and garage street skate improvements, which are part of the EIC budget, and then some other expenditures related to landfill. We want to purchase new development services software, we're getting close to selecting a vendor on that. Public safety complex study, finishing that out, it's already underway. Rewriting our development codes, we want to get started right away. In fact, you have an item on your agenda tonight to create the committee that will work with the consultants to rewrite our development codes. We need to enclose the clock tower elevator, because we are having mechanical issues with it being exposed to the elements. And then, this is just an estimate for now, and we'll refine that as time moves forward if you all agree to it. A drainage master plan, which we've really never had, this will be critical for us if we move forward with a potential bond election for some drainage projects, and then a pavement master plan, updating the plan that we have, that's why the cost is not as great as last time you all went out for that service. So all these items, or several of these items are in Kerrville twenty-fifty, as mentioned earlier. Now, just asset replacement on the general side, things like pumper trucks, very expensive, as you all have come to, to know, and then vehicles for fire and, and new patrol vehicles for police, parks trucks and so forth. And we, we do monitor our fleet very closely to see what the needs are, and we do some projections about how much cash we need to make sure that we have some ongoing funding for replacement of our fleet. Some additional items here on page one forty-eight in your document, these mostly are on the parks side, but also the first item is related to ambulance services, the Lucas Automated Chest Compression Device, and then some wireless controllers for IT operations. Now, for the last year, we have been talking about the possibility of having a May twenty-nineteen bond election, and this is the way that we've laid that out, that we would do three tranches or three phases of that, layering in it in over time, as we could afford it with the idea that we're not going to raise tax rate to do it. So that's what this model shows you, the different issues in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-three, with still having some capacity over and above that, but not cutting it too close. So the, the total of twenty-three million over that three-year period in three phases would be to finance our new public safety complex, to rebuild some of our most deteriorated streets, to address the priority drainage projects, and then also some parks improvements. Then in the golf fund, we've talked about this a lot when Amy has been giving her, her monthly reports on golf. So we do have a, a plan here to, as I said earlier, transfer some money over here to kind of reset this fund or erase the accumulated deficit of two hundred thousand. And then we also have some rate adjustments for green fees, very minor, to help offset what we have, what I would call a financial structural problem in this fund, where we need to kind of set it right in terms of our level of subsidy, in terms of how much it's going to cost the users, while still making sure that we're competitive and that this is a facility that our, our residents and tourists can continue to enjoy. And part of that is also making some improvements with some of these rate adjustments in the subsidy for overseeding the greens in the winter, so we have better winter play, some net replacements, and some minor drainage improvements. Two funds here on this slide, both the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund and the Hot, Hotel Occupancy Tax Reserve Fund. Here, we've got the lion's share of the funding going toward the Convention and Visitors Bureau. It does represent a three percent increase. They did ask for more, but what we're recommending is the three percent. And also, the ongoing funding of the CDB's Arts Co-op Program for marketing of sixty thousand, and then the, the events that we continue to fund. One change that you'll see here, based versus what you saw in your work session, is that we are recommending an increase in funding for Playhouse Two Thousand. Currently, they receive about seventy thousand, is the fifty thousand stipend, plus approximately twenty thousand in utility reimbursement, and then another ten thousand for box office support. So this actually represents a thirty thousand dollar increase, and we are presenting it as a challenge grant, so they need to go out and, and match sponsor funding with the same thirty, or fifty thousand. So that's the idea here. And then it also, it helps to offset the cost of the events coordinator that we talked about in, in general fund, some golf tournaments that Scott puts on at the, the golf course. And then we do have a contingency program here of a hundred and one thousand, just because I know that we've got some projects brewing that we'll need to talk further about certainly, and some more to come on that. So the next step, as I mentioned earlier, is to actually have the public hearing on the twenty-eighth, and then the first reading ordinance, second reading on the eleventh of September. So tonight, the action requested of the council is to adopt resolution thirty-two two oh one eight. This would set the date for the public hearing on the budget, but also outlines in the resolution what the proposed tax rate is, and so that would be the action for the council tonight. So thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions now, or if you want to wait until the public hearing, either way.
All right. Do you have any questions, or do you want to move ahead?
I, I think I got a few that I'd rather not wait till the public hearing.
Okay. All right.
First one is something somebody asked me today, and I didn't actually know the answer. So one of the first slides you showed was seventy-five million expenditures for the combined thing. Is that true expenditures, or is that like some capital improvement allocations that are not really being expended, do you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm asking?
Right. It's expenditures that are programmed, they may not obviously all be spent in that year, because so often your capital funds are multi-year in nature.
Right.
So that, the, the delta between revenues to expenditures are those capital items, where part of it's that nine hundred thousand transfer at the end of this year that'll be helping to cover that. Part of it is money that's already been allocated in, in prior years that now we're going to be using in the next year. So it's all capital or asset replacement related.
Okay, so a portion of that won't actually go out the door this year, it's just in there as a expense right now.
A lot of it will go out next year, the way it's programmed.
Okay. And then the other is something that I would have asked before, but I didn't actually see it until I was looking at this stuff last night. So it, it's in the proposed budget on page fifty-nine, but it's, it's the EMS charges disallowed and EMS bad debt write-offs. We have a pretty substantial increase proposed in this budget. What's the reasoning behind that?
I'm going to ask Amy to, to speak to that, but it's my understanding that we've got some old counts that we really need to clean up, and just go ahead and write them off, they've been sitting there for some time. We've had this new service that's really worked things pretty hard, and now it's time to go ahead and just deal with that.
So we've been carrying some debt, or some bad write-offs that we haven't?
Amy, anything else to add?
Because it's like, it's, it's almost like eight hundred thousand or something like that more.
You're talking about on the disallowed side?
Yes, we're calling it a negative revenue.
Right, it's contra revenue, yes. Yeah, as Mark described, some of it does relate to, you know, some old receivables that are on our books, but also, we have better information with Intermedics now that we have a full year of service with them, and looking at how they're working our receivables. And this disallowed part is like when we send it in to Medicare or Medicaid, and they say, you know, we tell them it's a hundred dollars, and they say, well, we'll only pay sixty, forty is what's disallowed. And so the contractual difference there, we have better historical information with Intermedics on it now, and so we're, we're projecting that it's going to increase some. But I can give you more detail on, you know, breakdowns.
That's okay. I mean, I'm going to tell you, it's one of those things that, is it something that's monitorable during the year? Like, would a citizen be able to see, are we truly going to hit that? Like I said, it's, it's a big number, and it seems like a big revenue number.
Yeah, it is a big number, and there, and there also are year-end adjustments that we typically do to that number, because at the end of the year, we have to look and see, is our receivable balance really collectible, and how do we need to adjust it to properly reflect it on the balance sheet? And that is something that we've been doing this year on a quarterly basis, looking at, okay, what kind of adjustment would we have if it was year-end right now, and booking those along the way so that at the end of the year, we don't have, you know, a really large adjustment related to collectibility.
Okay. So we might see, we might see a windfall a little bit on it. I mean, that's a hopeful thing, right?
You know, I don't like saying that we're going to see a windfall.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, it's a possibility is all, because like I say, it's a big number. But I don't know who to ask this, the, the next question, but they, well, I, we, so it's an ongoing discussion I, I have with you, right? So the sales tax thing, and our current status, you know, it started out at the two hundred thousand. If, if we go with what we currently see, we're looking at, on the general fund, not EIC, we're looking at about sixty-five thousand is short, right? Something like that?
Well, what our current projections are, so we received August sales tax, and it was up a little over five percent compared to the prior year. I'm just putting an estimate out there of if September comes in at four percent over what we received last year, then we'd be looking at a ninety thousand dollar difference between what we budgeted and what we actually received. You know, we had some really strong months of a nine percent increase and an eight percent increase, it's now gone down to five percent. As we've talked about a lot, it's a very volatile revenue source, so four percent seems reasonable, but it could definitely change significantly.
Okay. And the other is kind of this overall thing, we, I'd asked you guys both in a meeting, and I, I left understanding it, but I became a little more confused later. So the, the one point two million dollars surplus, or whatever we call it, from seventeen, we, that, tell me again what that surplus really is. You guess it's something like it was from capital projects and we moved it to, is it some of those other things you listed?
Yes.
So what that is, is when we did our contract with the county for, for ambulance service, the city set aside a reserve of one point two million dollars, just in case it didn't work out, and, and we were short that money that they would have paid us otherwise.
Okay.
And so last fiscal year.
We captured it.
We captured it and moved it over to asset replacement to do the purchase of the fire pumpers.
Okay, and that's, it led into the next question. So are, is, is asset replacement fund truly a one-time thing, or is it truly a kind of an ongoing maintenance?
It's ongoing, and we do usually, from year to year, program funding for it out of both general fund and water and sewer fund. That, that amount varies from year to year based upon other things that are happening, like surpluses that we want to use for one-times kinds of things.
Right.
And while, you know, they aren't necessarily one-time in nature in that eventually you're going to have to replace them, it does help from a standing, a timing standpoint to handle them as capital expenditures in that way with, with the one-time funding.
Right, so it, but it gets into the, the biggest question I have, which is, how, how are we able to increase our expense budget, general fund, that's all I'm really talking about? So we, we increased our expense budget from eighteen to nineteen by, I don't know, six, six and a half percent or something like that, and, and yet do that while we're essentially collecting less property tax? How, how are we, how are we doing that?
It's, it's not easy.
I mean, is it, I mean, I guess my, the question I'm asking is, is it a sustainable model, or are we actually, in that, in that transfer, did we just put us in a place where we've got a maintenance problem next year?
No, I don't think so. You know, that's why we do that five-year plan. And the five-year plan makes some assumptions about how much we're going to transfer, budget for and transfer, not just from surplus. So it's funded as part of the operating budget.
Okay, so is, I guess would the expectation be next year that our expense budget might actually go down, because we're not, we're not going to have these asset replacement one-time, one-time lumps going to them?
You do have some unevenness in some of your larger purchases, like your fire apparatus, they're just so expensive, and so it does, it does put some lumps, so to speak, in your funding cycle from year to year.
Okay.
We do have some large transfers, like for the development services code rewrite, that's, you know, wouldn't happen in a few years, but there'll be other projects that come along as well.
Yeah, and, and kind of back to that one-time and not-one-time, the golf fund thing, I realize it's one-time in nature, but that one's but that one's truly picking up prior maintenance, isn't it? I mean, maintenance shortfalls, I mean, it's budget shortfalls really from the golf fund.
It is, and that's why we want to fix it. As I mentioned earlier, the financial structure is not... This, hopefully, will do that. Combination of things. Hitting the reset button in terms of erasing their accumulating fund balance, some minor fee increase to help offset expenses, and then we have the subsidies still coming, which we hadn't programmed until last year for the first time.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's good. And I got one last question. It's, it has to do with, all along I've been going, okay, we're gonna add two new employees to the sports complex, and I was like, okay, it makes sense, blah, blah, blah. And then it dawned on me. The sports complex appears to be running well now, so what is, what services or maintenance are we not doing now that the two people are going to do for us?
So Ashley is just making it work, and a lot of her supervisors are doing things like mowing themselves. And they're, you know, they're spending a lot of time doing that and not doing other things. Or she's pulling crews from other types of activities to get that done.
You mean, non-sports complex parts?
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to add to that, if that's right. Why would we not contract that out for the sports complex? Have we looked at that? Would that be cheaper than adding two positions and more equipment?
We did look at that, and we can continue to look at that each year. And, you know, it could be an excellent, quite frankly, an excellent lean-six-sigma project. But they do so many other things. That's the issue, is it's not just straight mowing. There's, you know, getting the fields ready, dragging, and, you know, lining with chalk and other maintenance types of activities. So it's not like you're gonna hire a firm that's just doing mowing.
No, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you... You're suggesting, yeah, he's looking at the, like, when was the last time we looked at contracting out maintenance of that complex? The lining of stuff, I would argue that's probably an in-house thing, because it's kind of a weird timing of it. But the rest of it, maybe. When was the last time we kind of revisited that possibility?
Just on the mowing side, during the budget process, Ashley did try to get some bids on mowing, and she contacted multiple companies, and she was only able to get one company to respond, and they required us to pay them to give us a bid. So we didn't make that payment, but we had a very difficult time even finding a company.
Okay, well, let me just tell you that I currently do a lot of stuff volunteer at the county field. If someone were to ask me, and people were nicer to me in general, I might volunteer to do some of this stuff. You know, it's like a thousand hours that I put in out there. So, and I'm half joking, not particularly really all joking. But anyways, just throw it out there.
Okay, Ms. Vogel, anything else?
That was kind of one of that, too.
Any other comments? All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution thirty-two dash twenty eighteen, setting forth the ad valorem tax rate to be considered for adoption for the twenty eighteen tax year, and calling a public hearing prior to the adoption of the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget as required by both cities charter and state law.
All right, do we have a second?
I think it's out there already. Didn't it? Because I don't have a button.
I seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. Let's vote then.
And we really didn't do anything there, right? We just told you to set a public hearing date, right?
Yeah.
Basically, yes.
Yeah, now I see, after that presentation, why you ask if we were to take a break. All right. City Council, let's see.
Eight F, I think.
Eight F, yeah. Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen, creating the City of Kerrville Code Review Committee pursuant to the city's adoption of Kerrville twenty fifty comprehensive plan. Mark, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So in the Kerrville twenty fifty plan, it's, there's an action item in there for you all to create a committee, a citizens committee, to work with a consultant in going through all of our development codes to review them and see what changes need to be made, just to make them work better, if nothing else, but also consider any other new items. The idea here is that it might take up to nine months, or actually, at least nine months, to work through all those, and that the committee may be making recommendations that whole period, so they're not waiting till the end of nine months to give you all one recommendation about seven or eight ordinances. So they would be sending those to you as they complete their review each time. So we have talked to a consultant about the work that would be required, and they're giving us a proposal. They're also gonna give us an idea about which ones we might want to do first, so that, you know, you have that ripple effect between zoning codes and other items, whether that's signs or sidewalks or whatever it is. So they're doing that now, we're waiting for that proposal to come in. So the idea is that in October, we hire them, or some firm, and that we have this committee already in place. So my ask of you tonight is just to create the committee. And the way you would create that is adopting this resolution. Each of you would appoint three individuals, and at least one of those needs to have served on Kerrville twenty fifty comprehensive plan steering committee, or one of the subcommittees.
One, if we're appointing three, each of us needs one person from twenty fifty steering committee.
So you had that whole continuity about they were involved in the plan, they know what's in it, they know what it means. Could be more, more than one, but at least one. The mayor would appoint the chair to the committee. I would respectfully ask that you all try to make those appointments by the end of this month, so that we can schedule their first meeting in September. They'll probably, they'll meet definitely once per month, but probably more frequently than that to work through all this. But probably no more than twice a month, and not every month that way. So to give you an idea, as you're recruiting, you're asking people, you know, who might want to do it, that would be the, kind of a guidepost. So that's the ask tonight, not that you appoint individuals, but that you create the committee pursuant to this resolution.
All right, so at the next, by the next council meeting, would be good to have those names?
It would be good, but not necessary just by the end. That's the twenty-eighth, so by the end of this month, you know, a few days after, it'd be fine.
We won't actually have, or will we, have to approve as a council who we appoint? Or can, okay, so we can just, we can create this thing today by a vote, but then just give you names, and you say, this is them, right?
Whoever you say is it, yeah. Now, the ordinance does, or the resolution does say, you know, there's eligibility requirements, right? In addition to having served at least one of them in the process for Kerrville twenty fifty, that they must be a city resident. And, you know, I know there's been some discussion about that with several of you individually, so I expect there'll be some discussion about that tonight.
So when we speak to these candidates, will, should I tell them just to sit tight until I have information to give you, or should they...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because then all we, what I need is just their contact information, and we'll do just like we did with Kerrville twenty fifty. We'll reach out to them. We'll poll the group about the best day to meet, give them a whole schedule, try to schedule all those meetings out. Maybe the first meeting, we just have that first, and then schedule the rest of the meetings after we get some feedback from everybody. It's a smaller group, which is, you know, makes it a little easier in terms of the scheduling, but it's still gonna be fairly large.
All right, okay. All right, any questions in regard to that?
I have some questions and comments. I would feel more comfortable if we could actually set, it doesn't have to be the meeting days, but it's meeting times. So when I'm picking my members, I know that if they're working from eight to five, and the meetings are gonna be at three, they're probably not gonna be able to attend. A lot of that happened when I picked subcommittee members that were not able to attend, because of the scheduled hours. So if we could maybe define when that would be, that would be a lot easier for me picking my members. And also, on the subcommittee members or steering committee members, even if they were not in the city, can we still pick them? Or do they have to do, does that have to meet both of those?
The way that it's currently written, they have to be a resident of the city.
Okay, House Counsel, will you have a problem with extending that to the ETJ? Sublease signs and subdivision is, the ordinance does affect the ETJ, is that correct?
Subdivision.
I kind of like the idea, as you asked it. If it's, if it was somebody that was on a steering committee or a subcommittee, I don't have a problem removing the...
Qualification for city.
That particular qualification. On the rest of them, maybe we're more strict about it on that type of thing. It kind of gives, it gives you one of three, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's just a suggestion.
What is the reasoning that they be a resident of the city?
Great question. So the idea here was that with Kerrville twenty fifty, you know, is a thirty-year plan. And so conceivably, a lot more of the county will be inside the city limits in thirty years. Maybe not, but it's possible. So we want, we wanted the whole county to weigh in on that. When it comes to the development codes, this is really about the here and the now, and who's here today, and how it impacts them and their property and so forth. And so it's not the people in the ETJ, or the people in the county, except for, as Councilmember Vogel has pointed out, the subdivision code does apply to the ETJ.
And sign ordinance, I believe? Is that correct, Mike?
So for that reason, I personally don't really have a problem with you all extending it to the ETJ, but I wouldn't extend it any far beyond, further beyond that.
For just those categories?
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind doing what George's recommendation was. As a subcommittee or steering committee member is in the ETJ, that's, that's fine with me.
All right, then, let me ask you then, in terms of what we're voting on. Are we then extending it to the ETJ? But, okay, are we doing that?
That'll be in the motion.
We need a motion for that.
That would be an amendment to the resolution for you now. So if, when you make a motion, you would say you want to adopt this with that amendment.
Okay, all right. Just a second before we go to that, Ms. Sigerman.
Did I have a question?
I thought you did.
I think I had a motion button pushed.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
I think that's a go with what you're describing.
So what is the motion now?
Oh, you want me to make a...
One more before the motion. What do y'all feel about the time, setting a time?
Oh, thank you, thank you. What are we looking at in the way of time, of time of meeting?
Well, to get the majority of the people there, that's why we polled them, and that's what we did with Kerrville twenty fifty. But it did turn out that some people weren't able to participate as much, because it was during the day when people were working. So, you know, whatever this council's pleasure is about setting, you know, evenings or not, it's fine with...
If I know ahead of time I can poll my, the members I want to appoint, and they can tell me, yes, I can most likely make those, or no.
But it's kind of hard for us to set a time when...
Well, we can set... No, it isn't. So if we set, it's kind of like putting somebody on the city board. I was just thinking, you know, four o'clock or something like that. But basically, city boards work that way. We put people on them, and they already know in advance when their meetings are, so they know what they have to do. So it'd be, it would work the exact same way. We just pick a time right now, and I would suggest a late afternoon thing that's, you know, maybe they had to get off work a little bit early, but, or maybe not, you know, four-thirty, because staff will be at this meeting too, right? So I'm thinking something like the four...
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we want to make it easy for the most number of people.
Okay, we're gonna put it in the motion, but we can't have common agreement? The possibility of going late afternoon, four o'clock?
Four P M. or later.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, then, can I hear an amendment to the resolution?
I pushed the motion button, but...
Okay, all right.
You know, go ahead, George, because I don't know when, mine was so long ago, we had all this after that.
Okay, well, I would, I would move that we pass Resolution thirty-four twenty eighteen, creating the code review committee with, I say "with" right here, or do it, yeah. So with, yeah, with two amendments, really. One is that the, any people selected from the subcommittee or steering committees, the only requirement is that they're within the ETJ. Everybody else would have to be within the city limits. And I would also add to the motion that we set, we set a time of...
No, earlier than four?
Four o'clock, just say four o'clock, and if it gets pushed to, you know, whatever. Just, I'll make that as the motion. So that's an amendment, that the meeting time would be four o'clock on some day.
Okay, all right, do we have a second?
I think you do.
Okay.
But somebody did.
Somebody did.
All right.
Me?
Give me a second.
Apparently, you did.
You did.
No, I'm sorry. I was, somebody had a second.
I had a second.
Okay, there you go. All right, all in favor of that motion, if you would let me know, by voting? Okay, five-oh, and we only have a couple of more items, I think. I just want to say this, that we've got staff over here, and my experience prior to becoming mayor and now is, we've got a really good staff. Very professional, work hard, get the job done, and I just, I really appreciate them. And I'm also thinking tonight, like, you know, in the Old Testament, when they would put a fighting army together, like Gideon's, they would narrow it down, narrow it down, till they had the last best people. Okay, this is a mighty fighting army right here. Look at all, all the other staff members are gone, but...
Y'all aren't worn out yet, are you?
Okay. The A.G., City Council procedural rules for meetings and ethics policy.
Yes.
And Ms. Sigerman wants to speak to that.
Okay. At the last council meeting, we tabled further discussion and any decision to add new wording to our ethics policy regarding meetings and public notices. And because of that, I had time to think about the questions and the concerns that were raised about just how challenging it might be to determine what's a town hall meeting, what's an informal meeting. And my intent was never really about attending meetings or not attending meetings or not being able to attend meetings. My point of interest all along was more about the content and the subject matter of these meetings, and as, and particularly the June eleventh Doyle Neighborhood Meeting. Already in our ethics policy is the wording, as a member of the Kerrville City Council or a city board, commissioner, or committee, you agree to avoid and discourage conduct which is divisive or harmful to the best interests of the city. I would like to rescind my recommendation for the wording regarding the town hall, the meetings in general. I'd like to just take that off the table. But what I would like to recommend is that we have a workshop of some type in the future that would be just for us, not necessarily going to another city and learning what all the other cities in Texas do, but some, something where we could come together, and perhaps Mr. Hayes could help us prepare an agenda or have a speaker to give us some insight on just how to have the best meetings that we can have. Because we want to have meetings, we don't want to discourage meetings. Never wanted that in the first place. I think it's healthy to get out and talk to the public. We just want to make sure what we do is productive and not harmful, even if perhaps we can't see it that way, it can be perceived that way. So I'm taking the wording I recommended off the table, and I'm just recommending that we do our own little checks and balances at the beginning of the year, perhaps, since we have so much coming up. I know other cities do that once a year. They meet just as a council and review their ethics policies and their policies and procedures. Sometimes they don't really change them at all, but sometimes they add a few things that help. So that's my conclusion to my thoughts on that.
Okay, is there, is that a motion?
A motion if we want to have the town hall meeting, because, yes, I could certainly, you know, I mean, it's, it's my recommendation that we do a town hall meeting.
And ethics workshop?
A mini-workshop.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Mr. Broody?
Yeah, so I appreciate you taking that off the table, because I thought it was kind of ridiculous in the first place. But I will say this, in your comments just now, you said it was about the content, and that's actually just as disturbing as the original amendment. And so if this, and I don't have a problem with creating a workshop to have everybody listen to what the ethics rules are. I don't have a problem understanding what they are as they're written, so I'm not really sure that we get a benefit out of doing that, but I would attend. But if what we're gonna do is continue to try and control each other's movements when, with meeting with the citizens openly and freely, I would say shame on us. Saying we should invite all of council, as that prior amendment was set up, to every formal gathering, and then proceeding to do exactly the opposite at a formal gathering where the mayor was speaking, that would be shame on us again. Refusing to post a meeting in order to prevent one of us from attending, shame on us. Refusing to post a discussion item...
um, shame on us. Refusing to post a discussion item on an agenda, thus preventing, preventing citizens from gaining understanding to why the city is doing something, and that includes the fear of pulling things off the, uh, consent agenda, shame on us. Um, attempting to remove, huh, skip that one, calling, calling to, uh, slander me in an open meeting, which was done, um, and then getting a newspaper to print that slanderous statement, shame on us. Attempting to shut down any dialogue upon the dais, thus preventing citizens from, again, learning why we do what we're doing. It's not always about the questions for us, it's so that they can hear why we take action. Shame on us to cut that down. Violating procedural rules to the detriment of due process for citizens, shame on us. Signing false affidavits upon beginning elected office, shame on us again. Um, the one that I was about to refer to is actually one that was a little disturbing, it was a, it was a, a small thing, but everybody understands half, well, not half the time, but a lot of times, if we're getting any levity up here, it's coming from some comments that we might make. And so if there's laughter up here, instead of actually considering that to be an attack in some way, why don't we see it for what it is, which is just levity? And, um, you know, it, it was brought to my attention that somehow that's being misinterpreted. Um, but basically, the, the short version is, when we're talking about these ethics rules, if anything we do is seen as unethical by reaching out to, to citizens, I, I don't, I, I don't see that as an ethical problem. I see that as a problem of doing what we're doing, doing our job, and so shame on us if we were to put bound, um, boundaries around that any more than we already have. Um, you know, that, that's all I have to say.
I would call for the question.
Okay, uh, the question's been called for, and so if you would indicate your votes. And let's be, let's be clear, um, okay, set a date for a city council workshop to discuss the ethics policy and rules and procedures. That's what we're voting on. All right, if you'll vote?
And although we can clarify, are we expecting to look at possibly changing them, or what, what, what are we actually discussing?
My understanding is review, if there's obvious change, I assume we deal with that, but basically the review, review and make sure.
Yeah, with all due respect.
That we have unified understanding across the council.
Is that what you meant?
To review what we have, not with the intent of changing anything unless it needs to be changed.
Okay.
And we will know at that time. Right now, I mean, I, I am a little fuzzy on what is considered a town hall meeting, because to me, that a town hall meeting is a different type of meeting than a neighborhood gathering. And a, as such, town hall meetings generally have topics of conversation that are specific, um, that could be an agenda item or not. I, I'm just saying, I, I personally would like to understand when I'm, if we're going to have more of those.
Would you consider, would you consider doing this? And you don't have to, but would you consider making the motion be that we all go off and read the ethics policies, and if after reading that, we have questions, come to a workshop, and if you don't want to change that, that's okay?
No, because I, I can't know for sure that we are on the same page, or we, or we don't agree. But if you do it on your own and I do it on my own, I.
Okay, leave your motion, and I'll.
Could we add the word "review"?
Uh, you know, I, well, I, I think we're better.
We're okay.
Just to go with the motion. Yeah, okay.
I don't think any harm will come to it, let's put it that way. Anything, it'll help.
All right, okay, it's four one?
Yeah, I'm going to make a real quick comment as to why I voted no. I, I see it as kind of, um, if, if we're not expecting to get together and make changes, then I don't know why we're getting together on it. So I was just saying, if, if you read them, if everybody read them and they didn't see any changes worthy, then I don't know why we're getting together. So that's why I voted.
Well, actually, I, I think that we probably will have input. It might not change the actual print at all, but I, if we have a guest speaker conference and talk to us about something that we'd like to have better explained, that doesn't necessarily mean we need to change our, so it's, it's just, I think it's a healthy thing to review it, and I think we should do it where we know we've all done it.
Okay, we have voted, let's move on, and, uh, here the city manager's report.
Uh, nothing to report, Mayor, just, uh, please give me your, uh, um, appointments for the, the new committee that you just all created tonight.
Okay, all right, um, the, okay, items for future agendas?
Yeah, I, I've got a couple. Um, um, I'm not suggesting, well, this is a future item, that's all it is. Re, research and finalize the true owner of Tybee Mountain, just a, just a thing out there, right? Um, and, um, safety, repair, replace of the Dallas Dockery Downtown Pavilion, discuss dealing with that railing that's, um, going to get a heavier set person flying over the cliff. Um, and then I'd like to look into, um, finding out, I think it's the city, but that memorial park at, uh, Water and.
Yeah.
Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
Where the lift station is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, a couple of things. One, flag at the top's getting a little tattered, but the bigger one is, there's three benches, and I'd like to try and find out what those plaques were on the three benches, because they're all three peeled off.
Do you want these as action items?
I'm not really sure what, uh, that particular one is more like informational.
Well, how about if we try to respond to all those, because I think we have answers to most all of those?
That works.
Um, and then if, if that's not acceptable, then we could schedule it.
Yeah, the Tybee Mountain thing actually would be an action item. You'll give us a response, and I'll decide what the action might or might not be.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, as I understand it, we have no executive session, is that correct? Okay, um, then, at eight fifty-seven, we are adjourned.
Woo, this is early.